I'd like to call the Brunswick County Board of Commissioners regular meeting for September 23rd. To the chairman and fixing to do the invocation and the pledge. If, if you have a, any type of headgear, we would prefer that you remove it in honor and respect for our God and country. So if you'll join me in a pledge. Father God, we come to you this evening after, after a hard week. We've, our whole community, we've had struggles, we've had challenges. And Father, we want to give thanks to all those that stood strong through this, that ended up providing to the needs of our community. We want to say, say a special prayer for those public safety workers that went above and beyond this week. Our county workers that stayed with it and went to, to all extents to ensure that we were able to address the needs along with all of our municipal workers. Father, we're, we're so thankful for the in Brunswick County, Father. This evening, Father, we ask that you be with us as we make decisions for this county. They're so important to the success of this county. We again want to remember all of those that have served in the military and continue to serve, protecting our honor and our freedom and allowing us this opportunity together this evening. Father, we, we give you the praise and glory for all things in your name. Amen. All right. Are there any adjustments to the, to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I have one under presentations I'd like to add number four, which is a resolution in support of congressional funding for the disaster relief fund, continuance of halted recovery projects and sufficient provisions to ensure or to prevent future immediate needs fund. That's what Heather hit on, although I think there may be psycho isn't, but that's the resolution I want to add.
Okay. All right. Is there any others? Here none? All in favor of that?
Do we need a motion?
Well, probably, I'm sorry.
I was afraid that changed.
Yeah, that was your motion and I have a second. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Very good. Before we get going this evening, I just want to say a couple of comments in regards to, to last week. Last week was, was a challenge for the county. It, it certainly, it was certainly something that from all predictions was something that was unexpected to, to have the outcomes that we ended up dealing with for, for a whole, for the majority of the week. You know, I can't say enough about county staff. I can't say enough good things about our sheriff's office, our emergency managers, our administration. But, but I also want to say a special word to, to those employees that, that ended up getting, getting confined to the facility because of the information flow that took place that day on that Monday. You know, sometimes you, you, you have to rely on information from professionals and sometimes that information doesn't materialize until, till the last moment. And we, we saw, we saw how that truly impacted us. I will say that there will be an after action report done on this particular storm and the, the impacts that it had, especially on our staff, and foresee in the future that some changes would be made when there's a, a storm prediction or whenever we get a category class coming. I think the commissioners have pretty much had discussions all week long about how negatively impacted our employees, the way in which the message flow took place. And so we want to do something to correct that in the future. As far as our road structures, guys, you know, let me, let me say first that we're very, we're very fortunate here in Brunswick County to have this dedicated DOT force that we have. They have, they have worked nonstop and are probably working at this hour. If they haven't opened Seventeenth fully, that they were planning on opening Seventeenth fully this evening. And so they, they have worked nonstop to, to ensure that. But let me add this caveat to all of that. You know, 25 years ago this week, we had a hurricane come in named Floyd devastated this area, separated the county in threes, but you know, we've had that same issue three or four times now with Seventeenth. And it has caused, it has caused disruption to our transportation routes for public safety. You know, I am not a proponent currently of the way in which DOT prioritizes roads construction in our district and in the state of North Carolina. I think we ought to have more focus driven by the state on our roads here in Brunswick County. And I am hoping that with, with a strong voice from the community and from, from this board, that someone will eventually hear our call for need in the, with our road structures and begin to put more funding into it. There, there is a lack of funding and we understand that. So having said that, is there any other comments from the board before we start?
Just, I have one. I was going to bring this up at the end, but since you've already talked about the after action report, I have some specific ideas that I would like to share and I had a motion I was going to make tonight. And given that we are still somewhat in response mode, we're still responding. I don't want to get into recovery until we finish response. But if we could just add an agenda item to our next meeting to discuss how we're going to proceed with the after action report.
That would be great.
I, I would like to say something about utilities. I know that they have worked over time, especially in the Southport area. And they have done an outstanding job to make sure the sewer issues have been addressed. So I appreciate them. I also appreciate the state because with Senator Raven and Representative Miller, they have answered the phone calls and, and have worked diligently with DOT to get them here to get the roads repaired. GFL, the trash pickup, I was really amazed with the roads out, the, the stuff that they have done to get your trash picked up. I'm really pleased because I was shocked that my trash got picked up. So, and DOT, I can't say enough about how they have worked continuously. They were here the, the next day after the storm, they were here. You might not have known it, but they were here and they were doing the job. And then they came across on the ferry as soon as they could get across. So I appreciate them and I'm very thankful for it. To EMS, our law enforcement and everybody that has performed. So we really have come out ahead, believe it or not, with the, the service they have done to get us this far. Because Darren Floyd, we didn't move this quick. So I'm, I'm very appreciative.
Okay. Which one? Go ahead.
I, I'd also like to comment on the Brunswick County staff went above and beyond. People slept here. The EOC was open 24 hours a day, the emergency operations center. The sheriff's office was nothing short of miraculous. They worked around the clock. There was deputies everywhere you looked. They guided people. They made sure that nobody got hurt. And I, we did have one fatality, but that was the fault of that person more than anything. He drove into the water with cops, deputies standing there. He drove through the barrier into the water. I, the sheriff's office was just incredible. DOT can't say enough. Our major roads are now open for the most part. The evacuation routes are cleared. You can get around. Management, everybody, just incredible work. And I want to thank everybody. And I'll end it at that, Mr. Chairman.
You want to do yours?
I just wanted to say, you mentioned earlier some of the staff sleeping here. I believe at least one or more of our management staff slept here. So, you know, it wasn't just rank and file, it was management staff stuck in this building. And I want to just commend everybody for their round the clock work on this.
Commissioner Cook?
Well, you know, this, this building got flooded and they're probably going to have to take this floor up. So, and on Monday, we were on a conference call at 10:00 AM and we were talking to the meteorologist, chief meteorologist, and we were looking four to six inches. And that's what we were all planning for because that's what it was, a non-true form of storm. It was low pressure and it brought in 20 inches. The water that came into this complex came in from the fields and woods behind us. And it flowed in here and it swamped out four cars. Staff that are sitting right here, right now, got stuck over there at Galloway Road and over there where it's Dollar General. They got stuck there for hours. We had 1,900 calls addressed by the sheriff's office, 911 center on Monday, which is unprecedented. Not only that, the EOC was working around the clock before and during the storm and after the storm. I was there, I saw it. They were working like bees trying to secure everything working. NCDOT, you can't say enough about, they were out there before the water even went down. Some of that water was tidal oriented and it was a king tide and they were doing everything they couldn't throw at it. Utilities were doing the same thing. They were going after it even though they were still in water. And you know, if you want to talk about the lane reversal, they tried to figure out a way around Seventeenth Lane Reversal because that's a tidal river, that, that area where it caved in. David Stammies, who was one of our assistant county managers, he was out there actually loading cones in a flatbed trailer for the sheriff's office to get it up there to do the lane reversals. Everybody was pulling together like you would not believe and it was phenomenal thing to watch if you could see it behind the scenes. I got to also take this. I've been a commissioner about 16 years. The thing I've always been impressed about this group is they always are proactive. They come up with evacuation plans. They have things in place. They run the modeling. They look at every single thing, anything you look at way before the storm. In fact, they're looking at what the storm's going to do this coming weekend and whatever might be out there coming out 10 or 12 days from now. That's about as good as you get. But they were doing all of that and the above. This is an unprecedented situation and it was something terrible. And I've never seen anything like a low pressure do this thing. I don't think anybody else has either. But I know you had 20 inches down toward BSL. You've got several of those fellows that all, who were doing everything. It was a very fluid, part of the pun, situation to continue to figure out which roadways will be open and how we can reroute traffic. And that was happening all the time. So my hat's off to everybody involved with it. Thank you very much for your service. And I have to tell you, I don't think you could find a better group of people anywhere in the state of North Carolina, much more less maybe the country, that would be ready, standing in the vanguard of people during an emergency. So thank you.
All right. All right. We're having, having that taken care of. I want to move into public comments. Let me say that I do have a sign up sheet that was provided. And I have over 25 people signed up this evening. We have 30 minutes allotted to public, public comment. Each person, each speaker, once we start, we'll have three minutes. It is your time. We, we ask that you be orderly and civil with your presentation. It is not a Q and A or a town hall process. We, if, if there's something that we feel like that needs to be referred to administration, we'll certainly do that and charge administration with following up on that and getting back with you on that. It is not a political podium where we don't expect any political campaign type of information to be given this evening. And again, I just want to let you know that it is your time, but be respectful of others' times. Any disruption that may cause someone to lose their time and take away from the 30 minutes is going to be a disadvantage to everyone. So I would ask that you hold your applause or any statements that you want to, to make from the audience that so that we can move along and make sure that everybody gets an opportunity to provide us with their thoughts and their comments. Having said that, I'll go ahead and start down the list and it looks like Josh Cook. All right. Come forward. If you'll provide us with your name and your address and then you can provide us with. And, and let me say this before you start the time clock. If there's any documentation that you have that you want to provide to the commissioners, if you will provide it to our clerk, she will make sure that we receive. Having said that, Commissioner Williams, are you going to be our clock for this evening? Okay. All right.
Good evening, guys. I'm very appreciative for everyone of you's communication. Unfortunately, we have to do it on Facebook and that's just the way it is. But I appreciate everyone. And Miss Pat, Mike, y'all did a fabulous job. I'm very happy with that. I'm up here about the Gilbert Road Benton Road subdivision. During Florence, we, several people had to deal with over 20 foot of water. My property had 15 feet plus on it. I only got seven this time. But we came up here and we expressed to the planning board that if you clogged that alluvial plain for the Ford's branch along the, where Benton Road comes out, you were going to cause us more damage. During Florence, I had two and a half days to get my equipment, lawn mowers, tractors, four wheelers, construction equipment, construction material off of that property. That is where I keep my shop. That was what, that's where my house was. I had 27 minutes to get myself and my wife off that property. Ms. Pat has the, has the, from my security cam, she has the videos. She sent them to staff. They built a nine foot wall down 100 foot away from the creek, all nine to two foot wall. I'm assuming they've applied for a LOMER, a letter of map revision or a LOMA, letter of map amendment. I'm sure they have and I'm sure it's been approved. We told this staff or this planning board what was going to happen. From two and a half days to get 13 foot of water to 27 minutes before I couldn't almost get my F-250 out of there. If y'all don't do something about the damn development around here. I'm a builder. I build homes on Oak Island. I've built them in Winnaboo. I've built them in St. James. I've built them all over this county. Get it together. I don't care who does it. 27 minutes to get myself off my property. We were there trying to get stuff, trying to raise it, trying to add. 27 minutes before my driveway had three foot of water in it. That didn't happen when, before Florence. It didn't happen during Florence. I don't care if it's a 2,000 year flood, 100 million year flood. That development has changed the alluvial plain of Ford's branch. We have notified DEQ. They have come to my property. They are pumping water during Debbie. One of their persons sat on that road. 50 to 75% of that development was underwater. During Debbie, they built burns. Your sheriff's department got camera. They took a video of the burn they built along the river. There's three more burns along Ford's branch. Not only did they erase the dirt, they built burns to protect them, which caused me, the Hewitts and Lamoras more damage almost than we had during Florence. Half as much water, more damage. 27 minutes from two and a half days. When it flows naturally, you have time. When it's modified, you do not. Now, Ms. Pat, where I live on Oak Island is my representative. She is who I reached out to. Mr. Cook, you're my representative on that piece of problem. You have the right to put a stop work order on that site. Go out and investigate it. Find out what they're doing. You can place, you can call for an injunction. Y'all can vote on it right now. Get the county attorney involved. I, I believe in development. I believe in smart development and damn it, we can't run this county without, we cannot survive. This county has to grow, but there are certain sensitive areas in this county that require more thought than they checks all the boxes in the, in the county regulations. A lot more thought. If you plug a hole, pressure builds up. Why the heck do you think they just finished fixing Benton Road today? Because the outflow got stopped by a bunch of dirt. I'm asking that you guys actually do something about it. I'm not for shutting down development. I'm for, we have a cert, we are an alluvial plain for the Cape Fear River. No different than New Orleans. It all flows this way. There are certain parts of this county where we have to think more about what we're going to, you can build. I even introduced, I was a planning and zoning administrator for County of Oak Island. I worked North Carolin, I worked with North Carolina Wildlife Resources and Kirsty, who is now the planning director here. We developed and got, should have gotten approved by this, by this, God, I got, I'm getting confused. Should have, you guys should have approved something called the green growth toolbox as part of your ordinance. It would have allowed for that land to have been developed, but been developed with environmentally sensitive areas being preserved. They wouldn't have got 209 homes. They'd have got 100. You don't think they can make money at 100? My fine. Thanks.
Thanks. For administration, I'm assuming that this is the only time clock. Our screens were not up, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we'll need our screens on.
Can you?
They're disconnected.
So, so can you give me?
Okay. So we'll have to look back. So, okay. I'll, I'll tell you.
Okay. Lynn Baker?
Good evening. My name is Lynn Baker. I've lived in Southport for the last 10 years. I'm not here tonight to question or lecture because that'd be a waste of my three minutes. Our community is suffering and slowly we will recover. But my heart is broken by the death of two residents, not one, and the horrendous destruction in BSL mainly due to a builder that has no conscience, no scruples that allowed homes to be built on land that was prone to flooding. Never responded to residents complaints before the storm regarding the collapsing of swells and property being flooded before the storm. I have already posted the fact that the three incumbents who are up for reelection have taken contributions from developers and builders. So we all know how you will not vote and how you will vote for development. Right here in Bolivia, there was wastewater water in places and 300, 3,500 homes are to be built here. If deannexation is successful, and it looks like it will be on the Williams track, they will build 7,200 more homes. This is luminacy. Duke's recent, recent evacuation analysis has reported that it would take nine hours to evacuate the county and admitted that this was optimistic. At the very least, halt all plans for development. Hopefully, the elections will bring in three new commissioners that have the interest of the county in the forefront. You have severely, severely harmed this county for your own profit. Hatsides, please don't tell us again how you did us a favor in Southport by taking away our rights to make decisions for development outside the city limits. You are self-serving, ma'am.
I would ask you again to be respectful of our time this evening. Terry Alston?
Terry Alston, 1215 Fletcher Hewitt Road. I have lived in Brunswick County since, I've owned a house here since 2006. I've lived here since 2007. We have been here multiple times about infrastructure issues. And the thing I'm going to talk about today is our stormwater ordinances and how well they're being implemented. The stormwater, according to Brunswick County website, the county passed a stormwater ordinance along with the stormwater manual in September 20, 2002. Think it might be outdated now. Also, according to the said website, stormwater permit fees have not changed since 2016. The topography of Brunswick County has undergone significant changes since then. Brunswick County Stormwater Ordinance requires that individual property owners, HOAs, are responsible for the upkeep of the stormwater systems on their properties. We recognize or I'm recognizing that the state is supposed to take care of the state roads, but the county is responsible for the maintenance of the county roads. Individual property owners are responsible for the upkeep of stormwater systems, including a minimum of monthly inspections, maintenance necessary to maintain the systems functioning properly. Documentation and records of all inspections and repairs have to be made available upon request. All stormwater systems to be inspected by the county or a designated representative on an annual basis. If the stormwater system is found in disrepair or delinquent, the county has the right and authority to perform the necessary and needed repairs and billing owners for all costs incurred. This isn't happening. Systems countywide are not being maintained, inspected or repaired by the owners, HOA or the county. A driver around the county provides evidence of lack of enforcement. Disregard of the ordinance and neglect are causing these systems to fail and exacerbate flooding in the county. All stormwater systems are encouraged to be built to a 25 plus year standard. How can it, how can one standard be good for 25 years when everything changes in that period of time? It is only, it only requires them to be built to a 10 year rain event. And in the last seven years, we have had at least seven significant rain events that caused widespread flooding. 2016 Hurricane Matthew, Tropical Storm Hermione, 2018 Hurricane Florence, 2019, 19 Hurricane Dorian, 2023 Hurricane Idalia, 2024 Tropical Storm Debbie. And then I don't know what we have. Do we have a name for this storm? Not a good idea.
No, if your time's up, if you can go ahead and end.
I, I, I'm almost done. The growing frequencies of these significant rain events are, lay bare the need of updated requirements. The county stormwater regulations are inadequate. The citizens, this planning, this is placing the citizens of Brunswick County at risk for loss of life, property as well as negatively impacting the livelihoods of residents, wetlands, estuaries. I already gave a copy of this. They've got it. So, but guys, we need to do better.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Anita August. I'm here to speak with you about something completely different. I will make it brief because I provided a handout to each of you. I want to draw your attention to a store that has opened in Wilmington called The Puppy Place. Most of us have seen the demonstrations in front of the store from people who are concerned about the puppies that are sold there for from 2,500 to $5,000 for designer dogs and so-called purebred dogs. If we allow stores like this in Brunswick County, we're opening the door to big, big trouble. It's a quick conclusion from anyone who pays that much for a puppy that they're going to breed that dog for two or three times to try to recoup the money they spent on buying that puppy. Our sheriff's office and the animal protective services works too hard to find good homes for dogs from Brunswick County. We do not need puppy mill dogs imported from Missouri to clog up our system here and add to the problems. So again, I'm deferring the rest of my time to these people who have suffered terribly with this storm. But I am asking you to read the materials I've given you and work on this for the future because it's only next that they're going to be hopping across the river and opening up a store in Leland or Southport. Thank you. Thank you.
Mary Ann Harris. Mary, Mary Ann Harris.
Hi, my name is Mary Ann Harris. I live at 8735 Southern Homestead Trail, Ash, North Carolina. And I just wanted to, I, I had mentioned a while back when I asked for the shade law, which I thank you for, I know it's moving forward, I'm very, very pleased, for a public animal welfare public advisory board. I have done some, I, I've given each of you an example of different counties that already have them. And I spoke to quite a few of the people on, in both counties, and it is very, very successful. Actually, the gentleman I talked to today, we have Duplin County, there's a hunter on the, on the board, a veterinarian, you have your, your rescue groups. We are having the, in 10 years, this is the worst we've ever seen in this county as far as homeless animals and cats and kittens that need to be spayed and neutered. We have a lot of issues and we really want to get the public involved. This advisory board would unite everybody to work together, to come with, up with ideas to help the, the overpopulation. We'd like to bring it back into the schools, help educate the kids about spay, neuter and about animal welfare. So I really think if you look over the material, you'll see it has, you know, like I said, I've spoke to many of them. They said they have a lot of good, you know, a lot of good has come out of it and suggests that, you know, that we try it. So I, I'm hoping that you'll consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Christie, Christie Merritt.
Hi, I'm Christie Merritt, 2986 Longwood Road in Ash. I'm speaking for over 4,000 of my members from Stopover Development and my nonprofit Brunswick County Conservation Partnership. I know everyone's wanting to speak on the tragedy we just faced within our county, but hurricane season is not over until November. This was a cyclone, cyclone eight to be exact, not far from turning into a tropical storm. If a tropical storm or hurricane hits like Florence or Matthew did, are we ready? Florence brought 36 inches of rain, Matthew 17, and Debbie 15, and Floyd was only 15 to 20. But that's what it's like living in a coastal area, especially in North Carolina. This could have been catastrophic and still can be, and we need to stay prepared and be ready. We needed more road closure signs eight years ago with Florence, still we're running out. We have had over a million gallons of untreated wastewater discharges since February. I asked for a moratorium then. You can't guarantee the structural integrity in Brunswick County with the overdeveloping, developing we are facing. New Hanover had to do the same moratorium in 2008. Right now, that same untreated wastewater and already contaminated rivers are in our neighborhoods due to the flooding. Our wildlife, pets, kids and us are at risk for bacterial diseases and viruses right now. We just had E. coli in Oak Island and inner Cooksey due to feces and holding. People in our county had to reach the elderly, their kids, and forced to walk in these waters. There's issues with the areas now that need to be addressed before anyone developing such as Benton Road. The big neighborhood your planning board has already approved, knowing it was already part flooded, flood zoned. Once that land is concrete and roads, more water will run into that river. Benton Road will then turn into a river itself, just like we seen this past storm. Stormwater ponds only are temporary holes. Our rivers are seeing the growth rate from all the stormwater ponds and runoff from these developments being clear cut and wetlands destroyed and damaged. Natural free resources that would have absorbed the runoff, and we warned you and pleaded you, pleaded you last year to slow down. But this is our future now. All we can do is learn from our mistakes and act. I'm asking for a moratorium again due to our health and safety being at risk from our wastewater discharges to our roads needing to be repaired and inspected. We need to stop all new approved and future developing temporarily until we find a resolution. We want responsible developing. After meetings I attended here, I spoke with some builders that have said, you can't be, you can't be mad at us builders. Brunswick County is one of the easiest counties to build in, they are lazy. That's their words, not mine. I've asked about the UDO to be updated for over a year, being told it was. Well, it almost took a year for the planning board to decide, or the planning department to decide that they needed an outsourced to update it. Now we wait again. Let's not lose any more lives, whether it's one, two, five, or 10, or people being sick and claiming a moratorium now until the UDO is updated, which will give planning after an extension 120 days to do it. Please, I plead for you to do this to protect us, your voters. I'm trying now.
Thank you.
I'm representing a group, so I should have eight minutes. So even though I'm not.
Should have, should have spoken.
That's what was up there.
Should have spoke about that.
I did, I've announced it in the beginning of the seat.
Name on the list appears to be Wendy Seebly. Ma'am, another word will have you removed. You're welcome to leave. You're welcome to leave. She should have mentioned it prior to that. The last name is unlingible, but it looks like Seebly from Calabash.
Commissioners, board members. My name is Wendy Sibley. 429 Sandalwood Drive.
Can you speak up a little bit?
4, 429 Sandalwood Drive, Calabash. The last time I was here, I spoke to you all, I brought you information concerning overcrowded classrooms, a lack of veterinarians accepting new patients, and the staggering number of long-term care facilities that are at capacity in our county. Today, I've come to ask you just one question. Collectively, all of you, is this how you want to be remembered? Every one of these testaments of suffering, loss and hardship due to the unchecked overdevelopment of our county is your collective political legacy. So again, I'm going to ask you, is this how you want to be remembered? When considering mass development in Brunswick County, do you wish to be remembered as a part of our problem or the solution to our problem? On behalf of every resident of Brunswick County, thank you.
Francesca Slaughter. I would, I would ask you again to hold the applause because you're taking away from the 30 minutes of your applause.
Good evening. Good evening, my name is Francesca Slaughter. And I live at 6272 Cattail Court in Southport. I've proudly called Brunswick County home for nearly 40 years. And at that time, I've witnessed our county grow and evolve. But today, what I see is alarming. Your reluctance to tackle critical issues on the minds of citizens, coupled with the vilification of citizens who simply want their safety and well-being prioritized over corporate profits. Commissioner Williams, you misrepresented and categorized ordinary citizens recently, advocating for their right to safety and well-being as special interests who want to strip property rights and turn the county into an HOA. You know this isn't true. Commissioner Forte, you've gone on social media and you've gone as far as calling these citizens nasty ignorant bullies. And Commissioner Sykes, you've even told those same citizens that they should be thankful to you for what you have done after spearheading Southport's forced ETJ takeover, bringing higher density and all the problems that go with it to Southport. This is not responsible leadership. Yes, property rights are essential, but they are not the exclusive domain of the wealthy, the politically connected, or the highest campaign donors. They belong to all of us. This includes the residents whose homes are flooding due to mass clearcutting for development, families sickened by the ash from constant burns on neighboring properties, and those who risk their lives every day on our increasingly dangerous roadways. As commissioners, you are the gatekeepers. You have both the authority and the duty to ensure that development respects the well-being of all. Property rights cannot be a shield for unchecked development, nor can they be used to trample the rights of the people who live here. I ask you today, as someone deeply invested in this community, to please step up. Thank you.
Madgery Burnside, 3701 Fairfield Way, St. James. On February 20th, 2023, this board adopted the Blueprint Brunswick 2040 Plan, which included policies pledging to conserve natural resources of the county, maintain the green of Brunswick County as development continues, maintain and mitigate the impacts of stormwater runoff from development, and hold private developers and real estate developers to a higher standard. One and a half years later, from where I am standing, this board has failed miserably following their own policies, which begs to ask why? The only way any of these policies can be achieved is by amending the UDO and prohibit clearcutting. Just to be clear, clearcutting is a development practice that involves the removal of all trees in an area leading to significant environmental impacts, one of which we just experienced firsthand. Currently, this practice is still permitted in the nine-year outdated developer-friendly UDO. After almost one year of waiting for a tree ordinance, on January 16th, this board was presented with a petition with over 5,500 signatures requesting a ban on clearcutting and a moratorium on new development. The petition stated, as Brunswick County is experiencing rapid development, we urge residents who care about responsible development to sign this petition, demanding that the county immediately pursue special legislation from the state to obtain the authority to enable the adoption of a tree ordinance and the resources to enforce it. The county must also adopt a moratorium on development while seeking the authority to do so. What happened to it? I have stood here and spoken up many times since then, all under the guise of public safety and quality of life. Sad to say, eight months later, an unexpected storm proved me and many others who have also stood here, proved us right. Without our first line of defense, trees, wetlands, vegetation to help minimize the effect of this catastrophic storm, our outdated roadways could not stand up to the pressures of the rushing water and erosion. One week before the storm, I spoke in front of the planning board in opposition to yet another 3,500 residential unit being built along our already outdated and inadequate emergency evacuation route. Perhaps you lost sight that safety should always be at the forefront of any decision regarding new developments. If you truly cared about your neighbors or your county as a whole, you should be fighting for us and stop putting profits before people. Just because developers posing as state representatives pass legislation in Raleigh does not make allowing more homes along our already overcrowded roadways any less negligent. We need representatives that are willing to fight for our rights as Brunswick County residents before there is any more unnecessary deaths, loss of life or property.
Good, good evening, how are you? Courtney Milliken, 6776 Randallworth Drive, Ash, North Carolina. As you've heard before this, we are all here and aware of the, we've experienced extreme devastation this week from an unknown rainstorm. I've lived in the area 27 years and my husband was born and raised here, and we have never seen flooding or roads destroyed like this storm has done. We've been told this is because this was a thousand-year storm, too much rain, too fast, no time to prepare. I would like to dig a little deeper, please. How could we be more proactive? We have to treat our wetlands better. When we have storms that produce a lot of water, the swamps fill up. The water is absorbed by trees, roots and vegetation. If these things are not there, the water takes a different path. Our county has allowed many large developments to be built that come in and clear cut all of the trees and vegetation with mass development, which also brings a large amount of concrete that is bored. The water must then find a new path, which means roads washing out and flooding. We have seen people's property that has not flooded in 50 years that now floods because adjacent property has been clear cut and water now makes that new path. My father-in-law personally experienced this during Hurricane Florence. We did not learn from Florence. And here we are again, six years later, and it's that much worse. We do not have the infrastructure to support this development, and it's ruining our beautiful county. People move here for the beauty of the natural environment, which is now being destroyed. To add insult to injury, the same people who raised these concerns to the county leadership were recently targeted on social media posts suggesting that information they provided wasn't true. Decide for yourself if this is true or not. Groups that have tried to warn the county did so with the best intentions to prevent exactly what is happening right now, yet their concerns were dismissed, ignored, and even ridiculed by members of this board. Many of these groups are not against overdevelopment itself. It's the manner in which this, this is, that is being developed, in which the land is being destroyed and made, and this has made it happen. Leadership has not only ignored our concerns, but has also gone so far as to label them as non-truths. No one is perfect, but when you are repeatedly warned by voters that indicates that this, these things are inevitable, and you dismiss those concerns as falsehood, you become part of the problem. We deserve better than this. A little over a year ago, I reached out to a few of you on the board. I expressed these concerns and you responded that you have no power to stop this unreasonable development. I feel differently. I want to ask you again, is this true? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our 30 minutes has expired, so I'll turn to the board to see your desires. There's 11. Hold on, hold on, I can't hear you right now. Sit down. Sit down a minute, hold on a minute, hold on a minute. We've got 11 more people that signed up to be heard this evening. It's up to the board. You don't have any time, that's what I'm trying to tell you, the time is up. It's up to this board, if y'all want to hear the next 11, we can do that. They showed up this evening, so. Again, please hold it down.
Can we give it a time limit, like an additional 20 minutes?
Well, it's going to be at least 30 minutes if you look at the 11. I mean, if we went through 11 in 30 minutes, we could look at another, another 30 minutes, so if you want to go.
Randy, I don't have a problem, but where I have the problem is the lies that's being told about.
Either, either.
I got proof, but you've got to listen to me now.
Wait a minute, whoa, 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 whoa.
Y'all.
I don't have a back and forth, I know. Do we want to move forward and allow?
No.
For these folks, just kidding. I've got one.
I'm, I'm good with it, but let's not exceed an additional 30 minutes, that's it.
Okay.
At the 30 minutes, cut it off.
30 minutes? 30 minutes, okay, and I understand, I heard what you heard. All right, so we're going to extend it for another 30 minutes so that we can hear the folks that signed up. Glenn Parker, or Baker, I'm sorry, Glenn Baker. No, I hope not.
What was his name?
Yep, Glenn Baker, G L E N M. Good evening, commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Glenn Baker and I live at one ten Northeast Sixteenth Street. I'm also the president of the Oak Island Civic Alliance. I'm here to address a topic that strikes at the heart of how we view our community and the direction we want the Brunswick County in the years ahead. We often hear the phrase, run the county like a business. It's an idea that suggests that we should focus on efficiency, profit margins, and growth, traits typically associated with the private sector. And while there's certainly value in some of these principles, fiscal responsibility, effective management, and long-term planning, I'm concerned that by leaving too far into this mindset, we risk forgetting something crucial. Brunswick County is not a business. It is our home. When we treat the community, the county, as a business first and foremost, we prioritize short-term economic gains over the well-being of the people who live here. A business's ultimate goal is to maximize profits, but the goal of a community, of our community, is to maximize the quality of life for its residents. This requires a balance between economic development and the preservation of our environment, culture, and community spirit. Take, for example, the rapid growth we've seen in recent years. Development has brought opportunities, no doubt about that, but it has also brought challenges, overcrowded roads, strained public services, and environmental degradation, as witnessed by the latest tropical storm. When development is driven solely by economic interests with little regard for the long-term consequences, it's our residents who pay the price. Brunswick County's charm lies in its natural beauty, its tight-knit communities, and its rich history. These are the things that cannot be quantified on a balance sheet, but they are very the very things that make the place home. When we allow unchecked development to overrun our towns, replacing forests and wetlands with concrete and subdivisions, we are sacrificing the character of our county in pursuit of financial gain. We must ask ourselves, what kind of Brunswick County do you want to live in in ten, twenty, or fifty years from now? Do we want a county that feels like home or one that feels like an endless stretch of strip malls and subdivisions, indistinguishable from anywhere else? Running the county as a business may generate revenue in the short term, but it often overlooks the hidden costs, costs to our environment, costs to our infrastructure, and costs to our sense of community. Businesses relocate when profits decline, but we, the residents, remain. We deal with the long-term consequences of decisions made today. Commissioners, Brunswick County is more than a collection of properties to be developed or businesses to be managed. It's our home. We are counting on you to safeguard the things that make this county special, even as you work to ensure its financial health. Please, as you make decisions for the future, remember that a community's true wealth is not measured solely by its economy, but by the well-being of its people, its environment, and its sense of place. Thank you.
Terry Holly?
Well, they're gonna say their name when they get there, Terry Holly, and we'll get them.
My name's Terry Holly. I live at twelve forty-seven Palatka Place in Palmetto Creek, Olivia. I hope you, as our elected county commissioners, will open your eyes to see what has happened to our county this last week. This is all due to the filling in of our wetlands and low-lying areas. In two thousand and six, the county commissioners gave the planning board the right to deny or approve these developments. It is time that the county commissioners went back and took this authority back from the planning board. We were here three weeks ago to try and stop P D one-one-nine Gilbert Road. That development does not need to go in there. Gilbert Road was flooded, Benton Road was flooded, Clemmons Road was flooded, Old Lennon Road was flooded. There was no way in and out of Palmetto Creek and a lot of other developments, too. These developments are low-lying areas. They have gone in and clear cut. That's why we're asking to stop the one that they passed, the one-nineteen, because there is a Horton development already there on Clemmons Road that's already being clear cut, and it was flooded this past week. You could not get through there. So why go in and clear cut more property? It's gonna drain more on those people that's been living there for years. We don't have the infrastructure here for the building. Our schools are overcrowded. I don't care what their statistics say. I have kids, grandkids in four of these schools. They're all overcrowded. And it's not only retired people. These are multifamily homes that are going in here, so they are children that are coming in here. Even in Palmetto Creek, that it's supposed to have been a retirement development. There are kids moving in there now. Gilbert Road was flooded all over again, just like the gentleman said. Benton, they have put higher dirt, whatever you want to call it, they filled it up eight to ten foot high. We couldn't get through there. But what we need to do is take you as elected officials and stop this overbuilding. Y'all can take it back. I called the county to try and get before the Board of Adjustments. They told me that the Board of Adjustments told me there was nothing that I could do. We could not go before the Board of Adjustments because you, as county commissioners, in two thousand and six, and I know y'all were not there, was given up for the approval and denial of developments in this county back then. It was given to the planning board, and the planning board people that we have on there right now, they have no respect for our county nor our county residents the way they talk to us in here in planning board meetings. Thank you.
Heidi Shelly? Very good. Derek Storms? Looks like Holly Seakin. Probably got that wrong, but.
Holly Sagala, three eighty-six Ellis Road, Olivia. People actually moved here from Italy and immigrated here at one point, yes. My name's Holly Sagala, and there's a big, I live down Hewitt Town Road. Across the street on two-eleven, a hundred and fifty acres have been clear cut. I assume it's a housing development. And I thought it'd be fun to offer you guys some names for developments that you might want to recommend to developers when you're in close session with them the next time. So, and these are really fun, and you'll have, you can offer these up. I have, how about Floating Plantation? Clear Cut Acres. Pifa's Point. Floodwater Farms. That sounds enticing. Carolina Shores, up to your doors. Paradise Lost. Washout Estates. Cookie Cutter Calamity. I really love that one. High Tide Homes. Full Moon Flooding Estates. Brunswick Swamp. Lowland Flooded Shores. No Recourse Golf Course. Pontoon Homes Trail. So if you would like a copy of these names, I'm happy to share them with you and give them to the developers next time you see them. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Haley Bugai. I'm a first-time homebuyer and countrywalk neighborhood by Dream Finders. We call it dream crushers in our neighborhood. I speak for over thirteen people back there. It's a new development that's not sustaining. I've been fighting the drainage issues in my neighborhood alongside my neighbors for a year now. We've constantly been told by the builder that we're not in a flood zone. The grading and drainage is approved based on the county recommendations. Okay, well. However, with each storm, our house almost floods. September sixteenth, we had three inches of water in our house despite barricading our doors. It came through the walls. We've been told the storm drainage is based on the county's recommendations, and therefore the builder's not taking any responsibility, even though we've lived there for less than a year. I've tried to call the county engineers, and I've left a detailed message, but I've not heard back. We have lost everything in the storm and want to rebuild. However, if you guys don't address this, this is just gonna happen again. We cannot afford to keep going through this flooding of our home. We have been displaced, couch surfing with our three animals while trying to stay afloat. This has cost us thousands just to demo our house and continues to cost us to rebuild. We will be ruined if we have to keep going through this. We need the county to come address the drainage issues as everyone's house drained into our yard because they can't drain into the protected wetlands. But when the builder tried to fix our issue, they placed a French drain in our front yard and drained it directly into the protected wetlands that they can't drain it into. So tell me how this is being approved. We're now stuck in a house that's gonna continue to flood. We'll continue to lose all the items we have replaced and be displaced time and time again, until we're emotionally and financially devastated, until this issue is addressed. As a homeowner, we're limited to what we can do with the drainage. When we get eighteen inches of water on each side of our house, I can't build a flood wall that high. This issue is bigger than us as homeowners. We can't fix this issue without the county or the builder taking responsibility for the drainage plan. The five homes that were flooded have tried to get something done through our builder, but we're told that this is the county's responsibility. We need to know how this ineffective drainage plan got approved. All the homes in our neighborhood runoff into our property. They say this was a thousand-year storm, but every storm almost floods our house. And when our homes are flooded again with the next storm, will the builder in the county just tell us this is another thousand-year storm? Without your help, I guarantee this is gonna happen each storm we see. Regardless of who is to blame, they transformed a non-flood zone into a high-risk flood zone. Thanks.
Tell me again your last name.
Bugai, B U G G I. And it's Country Walks by Dream Finders, and they put French drains in all of our yards and drained them into the protected wetlands. When we moved in, they said that the reason why they built a berm and a swell and a hill, and now we have a swell through the middle of our yard that almost touches our patio with any light ring. They said that's because they can't drain into your protected wetlands.
And your developer shared with you that this was a county issue?
Yes, and they said that we can't drain into these protected wetlands. That's why everyone's home drains into ours. But then to fix our issue, they placed French drains directly into these wetlands, and I have all the pictures.
Mr. Stone, can you? Okay, can someone get her information so they can follow up with her? How many people live in your community? Okay.
And there's five homes that will get destroyed every time.
She's gonna get your information and someone to follow up with you, and if you'll share that with me.
Shaky, we've lost everything. I'm an ICU nurse that can't even work because of this. I can't even write. Nine eighty-eight dot com. Forty-one North, you know, R I S L N and northeast. One of those. Nine one zero two one two six. Yes, H A I L E.
Okay, thank you. All right, next up, it looks like Rob, looks like Christian.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rob Christian, and my family and I live in Carolina Shores. I'm here tonight to share with you some ideas on potential solutions, because I'm a lucky one. I did not experience what these folks have experienced. It's just jaw-dropping to me to hear some of these stories. So what I'm gonna ask you to do tonight is to take a very hard look at current policies concerning what I feel, and now I see this entire room feels, I didn't expect this crowd tonight, is just allowing rampant runaway overdevelopment that is taking place at a heart-stopping rate, far before an infrastructure that must be in place to protect the environment. Said in another way, I feel that the cart is frighteningly ahead of the horse, and flooding disasters that we just recently witnessed will only grow in frequency and strength if you, the commissioners, don't do something to mitigate the risks. We moved to Carolina Shores three years ago, and we love it here. Absolutely love it. We love the South. We love the beauty of all Brunswick County, not just the beautiful Carolina Shores area where we live, but we also love living in a place where children are still raised to say, sir, and to say, ma'am, and how utterly shocked we were the first time we heard it. We looked at each other and said, wow, never thought that we would hear something like that. But to be honest, other things utterly shocked us when we first got here. Open burns, for one. I'm a pilot. I have seen airspace closed because of air pollution caused by contractors that were indiscriminately stripping acres and acres of trees and setting them on fire. Shocking, creating so much smoke that you couldn't even fly through it, that the FAA actually had to put a temporary flight restriction around the area. That was shocking, especially because where we formerly lived, a resident would receive a five-hundred-dollar fine for even burning a small pile of your own leaves in front of your own home. And why such stringent laws? Well, it was because we learned the hard way. Everything started to collapse, totally collapse in the sixties. So some hard work by some hard-working people took hard looks and made hard decisions to protect the environment. I recognize it's a highly complex issue, and that is exactly why it's so hard. So let me share with you my admittedly uneducated opinions on what I would push for if I were part of your team. First, ban open burns. Require construction companies to properly clear the land before building without polluting our environment. Air pollution contributes to poor environmental conditions that wreak havoc on the environment. Second, ensure that before any large development is constructed, that an infrastructure is already in place to support it. I think that one of the best ways to learn is from history, so I urge you to get in touch with city planners in Wayne, New Jersey, a beautiful city that now faces aggressive flooding after almost every single heavy rain. Third, buy up strategically important land and make it properly protected. Naturally, this would have to be a highly strategic effort with the input from experts on where the most volatile areas are.
Christian, if you could move forward real quickly.
Okay.
Your time is up.
All right, so let me just very quickly say, fourth, enforce recycling. Absolutely shocks me that we can co-mingle garbage here. That obviously causes pollution. Fifth, and finally, you should consider writing a detailed report in plain English that tells this community what you're gonna do over the next five years to ensure that this is never going to happen. But let me finish by the most shocking thing I've heard tonight, and that is one of you commissioners said, oh, we've lost only one life. Wow. Well, how would you feel if that life was your wife?
That's what I said.
Your son or your daughter?
Lady, you're gonna have to leave in just a second.
Tom Simmons, fourteen sixty-two Longleaf Road, B S L. We're pretty fortunate that we live in a democracy where we all have the opportunity and the right to express our opinion, whether you agree with it or not. And when citizens express their opinion, for elected leaders to say that they're rude, that they're nasty and ignorant, that is not good leadership. And I just urge each one of you. If an opinion is expressed that you don't agree with, don't refer to citizens as ignorant. Refer to them as concerned citizens.
Hey, my name is Carla Wyatt. I live at seventeen seventy-five.
Hey, my name is Carla Wyatt. I live at seventeen seventy-five Clemens Road. Um, I live right where a lot of the residents already like covered a lot of things that I had written for tonight, so I'm gonna keep it short and sweet and just talk about my personal experience. When I could not leave the hospital when I got off from work. There was coworkers that have latchkey children who could not get home to their babies. That bothered me. They didn't have neighbors, so their seven, six-year-olds were at home because they can't afford to, you know, pay childcare. That hurt my soul. And then it took me, I had a friend come pick me up from work because I couldn't drive my car and ended up staying with my dad. But the pictures in front of my house was beyond what I could ever want to imagine and caused me great anxiety. The development across the road called New South Ridge built next up to a swamp. They built that, um, area up. They put it on, I guess, I'm trying to think of the word. Not pylons, but they, when they built the dirt up, they put these like wards there to keep the dirt from falling down. Well, that backed the water up onto my property at seventeen seventy-five Clemens Road. That water had nowhere to disperse or go. It washed out my driveway. I had no way of pulling, you know, you know, pulling into my driveway. We had to park on side of the road. You know, if I bought in thousands of loads of dirt, you know what that's going to do to my neighbor? That's going to put the, the water on them. So how, how am I being a good neighbor? How are these developers being good neighbors? They're not. But they, they say they are, but they're not. And I'm a poor person. I'm poor. I live in a mobile home. A single one mobile home and I cannot do any better than that. And I cannot leave and buy one of these three or four hundred thousand dollar homes and I work for the hospital. There, you know, I, this is all I'll ever have. This is it. And I cannot be flooded out because that's, I mean, I couldn't afford to put a new home there if I wanted to and I own the property. I couldn't, I can't. So that's all.
Linda Nolte, uh, N, N A T, O L E, I probably got it wrong, but.
Hi, my name is Linda Natoli. I live on East Boiling Spring Road. And I know you're all sick of hearing us to, you know, please stop the overdevelopment and everything like that. I'm hearing a little bit different issue. I live in East Boiling Spring on the other side of a detour, a very dangerous detour. Our EMS, our fire department cannot get around that detour quick enough. We have had two houses burned to the ground. On the flood, which just occurred, there was no way in, no way out. We were trapped. I'm a nurse. I know that in six minutes your brain dies without oxygen. This is not safe. Yes, I am the same person that came to East Boiling Spring and did try to speak to the board. Yes, I am the same person that they took the microphone away from. And I'm going to continue to stand up for my neighbors' lives as well as my own. This is not safe. It's not temporary either, sir. This is thirty months going on, possibly more now. I say that we need to scrap the whole dam project until we find out that it's safe enough to hold this water back. Because this was a thousand-year issue. And I beg you to drive around and look at the devastation, look at the detours. Look at what happened and ask yourself if those lakes were filled and they overflowed, you'd have a lot of dead citizens. And it, it just breaks my heart that, you know, I know you all heard about the old development and we had some cute little jokes about new neighborhoods, but we actually do have a neighborhood, so that's called Highlands. And these people flooded out terribly, brand-new homes, they lost everything. And I heard the contract is now changed to a LLC, so we can't touch him. You know the deal. They go, you know, and then these people lost everything. It's sad. We have a brand-new fire department with no firemen. We have to ask the county to please hire two full-time firemen. But if we have them, they still can't get there because of this detour. So what made Jeff Weincoff think that it'd be okay to just put a detour and sacrifice everybody's lives? I don't understand how he got away with this. I don't understand how he continues to get away with this. And I only ask that somebody, please look into this before we lose more lives, more houses burnt to the ground. I yield back.
Last name on the list, Ash Ramos.
Ash Ramos, twelve sixty Village Point Roads in Shalote. So according to Brunswick County's annual reports in twenty twenty-two, there's a population of about one hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and forty-nine. That's a two percent, two point two percent population growth. In two thousand twenty-one, there was a one hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine population. That is a four point two percent population growth. And in twenty twenty, there was a one hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-five, which is four point five percent population growth. So in our county, did you know that the planning board is approving TIA's with one percent? Growth rate and the state standard is two percent? How is that possible? In the last couple of years, we were at four and five percent. How are we growing, but our growth rate has lowered? Also want to add that Eagle Creek, part of your dedication tonight for water and sewer infrastructure, part of that neighborhood is still recovering from being waist-deep in water. This is not responsible. This is highly irresponsible. This is not smart. This is dumb development that's happening. Thanks.
Well, that's everyone that we had signed up this evening, so I will move to, uh, move on to the consent again. I'm sorry, we can't, I, I can't hear you because you weren't signed up and I don't think you. You'll, you'll have to get up with us after the meeting. We're, we've already allotted an extra thirty minutes. All right. Okay, thank you. All right, so moving on and looking for approval of the consent. Got a motion and second, all in favor of? So we move to, uh, presentations and the first one, uh, we're looking at a proclamation and we're looking, uh, to, uh, county.
I want to pause a minute.
Yeah, give it this, sir. And you? Okay, can I have staff help effects? If you don't, if you're going to leave, don't carry on discussions within the chambers. Please, please go ahead and exit the chambers if you want to discuss everything. You know, my position was in the house, he put me on another field. Probably wouldn't. Okay. All right, if we can, uh, cease all discussions in the gallery, we're, uh, we'll move forward with, uh, a presentation by our county clerk.
I sit back there. You can, you can face us.
Again, again, if you can hold down the, the discussion in the gallery. Hold on a minute.
Yes, sir.
Everybody okay out there? Everybody hear me right? All right, go ahead, ma'am.
Board, on behalf of the Daughters of the American Revolution, they had an event scheduled last week and due to the storm had to postpone it or cancel it. Uh, we have decided to continue with their resolution or proclamation on their behalf, which reads as follows. Whereas the Constitution of the United States is one of America's charters of freedom and whereas the Constitution establishes our form of limited government and protects our rights and freedoms, and whereas September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four designated as Constitution Day commemorates the two hundred and thirty-seventh anniversary of the signing of the Constitution of the United States of America. And whereas public law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing, issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America re-designated September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitution Week. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this historic document and to reflect upon the form of government it established. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Brunswick County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the week of September seventeenth through twenty-third, twenty twenty-four as Constitution Week and urges all citizens to read and study the US Constitution and reflect on the privileges of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities, which that privilege involves adopted this nineteenth day of September, twenty twenty-four. I'd like to ask for approval of the proclamation.
You have a motion?
I'll second.
In a second, all in favor of? Very good.
Thank you, Darren.
Members, my family's been part of the D A R and so it's been a really good group, so I appreciate that resolution being approved.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you doing this. Uh, utilities. Hear from you about water protection week.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of board. We appreciate your time and attention. And so we recently had a presentation to the Lower Cape Fear Water and Sewer Authority about source water protection. And we are going to present that tonight, but before we do that, I wanted to recognize a couple of employees, uh, Kristen Burden. There you go. My left here, our environmental compliance officer and Glenn Walker, our water resources manager. And they've been very instrumental in leading the charge for source water protection. It's been a collaborative effort. Um, we work with Pender County, Cape Fear Public Utility Authority, Lower Cape Fear Water and Sewer Authority, along with Brunswick County staff and various regulatory agencies, um, environmental groups and other utilities, um, to form a source water protection plan to protect our valuable source water resource that over half a million people rely on for their drinking water. And so I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Kristen and Glenn, uh, for the presentation and then we will request the resolution.
Very good. Yes, ma'am.
Perfect, thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm Kristen Burden. Um, I am the girl that spams your email for water advisories, so nice to formally meet you. Um, we are going to be presenting the Lower Cape Fear Regional Source Water Protection Plan. So why are we here? It is Source Water Protection Week, September twenty-ninth to October fifth. So before the resolution is presented, we just wanted to give you a presentation as to what source water protection is and what utilities is doing. So source water is defined by the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality as untreated water from streams, rivers, lakes, or groundwater aquifers that are sources of public drinking water. So for Brunswick County, our surface water source is the Cape Fear River and our groundwater source is the Castle Hain Aquifer. So what is source water protection? It is the act of protecting the drinking water sources from pollution and contamination. Some ways of doing so include the North Carolina Surface Water Protection Program and the Wellhead Protection Program, which thank you to the board here for your support on the Wellhead Protection Program. Brunswick County does have that. So a little history, back in twenty fourteen, North Carolina House Bill eight ninety-four was passed. It was an act to improve source water protection planning. And it required all public water suppliers to complete a source water protection plan. Then in twenty eighteen, the Federal America's Water Infrastructure Act was passed, which required all public water suppliers to submit a source water risk and resiliency plan, which Brunswick County did complete. Now, in between twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-three, North Carolina State Revolving Fund, or the SRF, created a priority point system for water systems that implemented source water protection plants. So these points aid in increasing your SRF score. So a higher SRF score means a greater chance of receiving funding. So in twenty twenty-three, Brunswick County partnered with Cape Fear Public Utility Authority. And we took the lead on developing a regional plan that also included Pender County and Lower Cape Fear Water and Sewer Authority. So we all pull from the Kings Fluff Station above Lock and Dam number one. So it just made sense that instead of reinventing the wheel four times, we all collaborate. So CFPUA already has an approved source water protection plan for their organization, so this is going to be a regional plan for all four.
All right, I'm going to take over here. So we worked with DEQ and they asked us to look at the river basin, but a, a much, uh, more acute area of the river basin. So what you see before you is a picture of the whole basin and CFPUA took a, a broad brush to look at a lot of the potential contamination sources along the whole river basin. Whereas DEQ wanted us to focus around the little blue star there, which is the Kings Fluff Pump Station. And you see the red dot upstream, that's being the commorze facility that we are all, uh, familiar with. So around the blue star there is an area, uh, shaded there that is darker, which is a ten-mile upstream area. That is the area that DEQ would like us to focus on because it is an acute area. Something happens in that area. We don't have much time to respond to, to a spill or, um, a, a herbicide contamination along the riverbank or something happening in that area. So it's what, much wider than the river, uh, that you see there because that's the watershed that drains into the Cape Fear River. So this is the area all up in, in Bladen County. And so, um, and then the blue star you see is right there on the right, uh, that's the downstream section of the river. So we're going to be looking at the potential contamination sources within that dark zone there. And there are about four, uh, currently sitting in there and lots of vacant land and farmland and forestry that goes on within, in that part of the basin. So we, uh, one of the parts of the program that we have to do is to develop goals. So we came up with three goals, uh, in addition to CFPUA to kind of complement, to see where we saw holes missing in their plan. So goal one is to facilitate a, uh, protection team that discusses regulatory matters within the basin. So we're constantly looking at draft N P D S permits that come up within the Cape Fear Basin. Uh, we're looking at, um, cathos, then general swine, poultry, and cattle permits, uh, to see if they're going to affect the folks that are, are in our basin. So goal two, we're looking at algae monitoring program at the raw water station. So that's a report that goes out every day, uh, to the folks that share the, the lift station or the, the pump station there. So, you know, we send out information about blue green algae, uh, chlorophyll A, turbidity, uh, organics and stuff. And this is all important for our water systems to know so we can treat the water, uh, properly. Goal three is developing a robust upstream source water protection outreach. So we have come up with a way to connect with landowners that are fifty acres and up and share with them, uh, USDA information about funding opportunities for erosion control, reforestation, uh, uh, conservation trusts, things of that nature. Because we've met with some of these folks up in the soil and water districts of Bladen County. And they have an outreach program problem. and they have an outreach program problem. They don't have a way to get the information out to folks. So we're working on that now and coming up with a plan to do a mailing to all these landowners up there to get the information to them about USDA programs to help them do, say, erosion control, like around large hog farm operations or poultry ones with, you know, large roof areas, the stormwater runs off the roof, it hits the ground, it washes the soil away, and they're right along the banks of the Cape Fear River, raising the turbidity and the fecal coliform levels and stuff. So they have ways to mitigate stormwater around these things, and they'll pay them to put them in. So it's not gonna really cost the farmer. So with that, those are our three goals, and we would like you guys to read this resolution and recognize Source Water Protection Week for the benefit of all of our customers.
Very good. I'm gonna come down and provide that.
And after the chairman's coming down, Mr. Chairman, I had one thing that I think is worthy of just taking note in this, and that's for protecting our source water is monitoring upstream inter basin transfer requests, which I know the Water and Sewer Authority does, but one of the biggest threats is Raleigh deciding making more water out of ours instead of new, so we gotta have to monitor that and be very vigilant.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your time, ma'am.
Guys, well, I'm gonna. We'll. And if y'all wanna get up here and sign even that way, the place wants to continue where we're gonna read the resolution to be recognizing so for protection, whereas health and prosperity and all of your life, Brother Canada, our citizens and community attend to the brotherhood, you know, for allowing the supply, putting in time for all of the breaking water. Whereas the Brother Canada, Brother Canada covered utilities serves not only the incorporated areas of Canada, but also serves the municipal, which is Bulling, Calabash, Fairlance, the Wath, the parts of Leland, the Vassal, Northwest, parts of O'Gallan, St. James, St. Andrew, Southwood, Galop, Sunset Beach, and Barnum Town. And whereas, for nearly four decades, Brother Canada has faithfully provided water to other utilities, which are customers of ours, including Ocean Island Beach, Holden Beach, Oak Island, Baldwin Island, and whereas protecting the drainage drinking water is essential to the government's citizens, health, the county economy, and for future generations. And whereas the county tribes, they love to come over together to ensure clean, safe, source water for all. And whereas the county encourages all residents, businesses, and visitors to the port to recognize the precious resource and help conserve water sheds that are the source of our water, protect our shared little victory from pollution, practice water conservation, and become involved in local organizations, plan and protect waters for future community health and economic stability. On therefore, let us be the chair of the board of commissioners, the Brother Canada, that September the twenty ninth through October the fifth, two thousand twenty four, being proclaimed as Silver Forest Protection Week. And a copy of this will be in the head of my minutes, and it's signed this day by myself and any option as the chairman of the Brother Canada Board of Commissioners, and I'll go ahead and make the motions.
I'll say.
And all in favor, right?
All right.
Very good. Very good. Thank God. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for showing my limits. And anytime you can stop those emails. I do. I do like the rescinding emails, though. All right, so next up on the list is our design and build contract board.
All right. Thank you, Chairman. If I could just take a brief moment, if you don't mind, to, this is my last meeting, serving as Brunswick County's deputy county manager, and just wanted to take the opportunity to thank the five of you for giving me this tremendous opportunity. It's been a pleasure serving you guys, Mr. Stone, Mr. Stanley, and all of the staff. I thoroughly enjoyed working for you guys as well, and wish you nothing but the best, and will be watching from the other side of the river. But just wanted to say again, thank you guys for this opportunity. Appreciate it.
We wish you the best as well.
New location.
That's right.
It's not a bad place.
Not not too bad. But again, feel free to reach out if you ever need anything, and pleasure working with you guys. So one of my last things I get to do with you guys is lead this project to hopefully a point of going under contract, and that is the selection of a design build team to construct our new Health and Human Services Center, Health and Human Services Facility, as well as our Emergency Operations Center. So I'm just gonna take a brief moment here to talk about the request for qualifications process that the county staff went through and what we conducted, and our recommendation to move forward. I'm not asking you to take any action tonight, but this is an opportunity to just tell you and the public what has happened up until this point and give you sort of the next steps that we expect to occur moving forward. So we'll go over a little bit of everything throughout this process. Feel free to stop if you have any questions along the way. So the county issued a request for qualifications on June twenty sixth of two thousand twenty four to build a new Health and Human Services Facility that would also house an Emergency Operations Center. This building is expected to be a multi-story building, roughly ninety to a hundred thousand square feet, and it'll be constructed in front of this administration building that we're in here now between us and Old Ocean Highway. So there's a tremendous need for several departments from a space perspective, especially when you think about our Health and Human Services Department. But in addition to, we just spent a week in our Emergency Operations Center, and we all understand the importance of a facility like that for Brunswick County, and being able to have an up-to-date and safe and secure E O C is extremely important for us. So we published this R F Q on, again, June twenty sixth. The submittal deadline was August second, and we were very fortunate, and I'll talk about the responses that the county received to that R F Q, but a little bit about the selection process. So a selection committee was created that was made up of Mr. Stanley, myself, and Mr. Pennix, our Engineering Services Director, who's likely to be the lead project manager for the county on this particular project. So we took the, we created a list of qualification metrics that we wanted to grade and judge each of the submittals by. And you can see the box at the bottom sort of illustrates exactly the points that we were looking to focus on from those particular submittals. And so their understanding of the project, the scope of work that we've outlined for it, their ability to meet deadlines and deliver a quality project within budget. The design builders recommended approach to the project, so how did they envision the project coming from start to finish, as well as the successful completion of similar design build type projects here in the state, and then the individuals that the design build team intended to assign to that project. So we created a weighting system based on those five different criteria points, and we use those to evaluate the submittals that were received by the county.
I ask one question on that slide before you get off of it. I mean, obviously, we use this set of criteria for this. Is it, would it be permissible to include a local presence as a scoring point, or is that something that cannot be considered if they have a local presence versus someone who is shipping everybody in from Asheville or somewhere?
It's difficult to provide a local criteria point for that, and I can get legal to speak to that a little bit more, but it's really frowned upon, I would say, to do that. We can pre-qualify folks that, again, you can look at their location and using their location as a concern to be able to respond or provide appropriate oversight of the project that's taking place. That is certainly something that that we can consider, but it's really difficult to make a localized criteria point. I got the head nod of yes.
Just like for that to be noted that I asked that question, because I've had people ask me that related to this project, so I wanted to get it out there.
I don't.
Give a chance to respond it. I know there are some legal issues, but I wanted to ask it on the record. I don't know if the attorney's gonna find her. He looks like he doesn't have to.
No, you cannot make that response.
He said it much more succinctly.
That has to be in the record as well, just so that I had someone ask me that.
So again, we we reviewed the submittals that were received, the selection committee did, and we shortlisted the submittals and created an interview process for for three firms through that project. But again, I'll speak of the submittals themselves, and just the fact that we received ten qualified design build teams respond to our R F Q, we thought that that was a very good indication of the interest in the project, where things are at from a construction standpoint within the construction industry and timing. To have ten groups come and be interested in this project, it really is a sign of of strength, it's a sign of the the project itself and just really where competition is right now. So again, I mentioned that we identified from this list of ten, three teams to move forward with into an interview process. We interviewed with all, we let it let it up to them to determine who they brought to that particular interview, but it was a chance for us to learn about their team a little bit more, ask a little bit more questions that weren't fully outlined in the R F Q submittals. So throughout that process, the selection committee was unanimous in its ranking of those final three firms. And with that, we are excited to recommend this project be awarded to Edifice Construction. Edifice Construction is a team of multiple different consultants and subconsultants, some of them local here to us in Brunswick County and the southeastern North Carolina region. But Edifice Construction is a construction management firm located in Charleston and Charlotte. They have paired with McMillan, Paston, and Smith as the architect. They are also located in Charleston and Charlotte. They've worked with the Civil Engineer Group Norris and Tunsil, which is here locally in Brunswick County. They've also worked with regional entities such as Timmins Group and Stewart Engineering for landscape, architectural, and some other design and engineering work on the project. So there is a local flavor and a local element to their particular team that they have recommended for this project. So again, not asking you to approve a contract with them tonight, just presenting the findings from the selection committee and seeing if there are any questions or concerns or items that we can better address prior to moving forward with executing a contract with them. Again, the expectation is is that legal staff and county staff start to that process of refining that contract, and you will see that contract at a later board meeting. But just again, wanted to present this to you, present the selection committee's recommendation, and see if there are any questions or concerns.
I don't have any concern because I don't know anything about them, but a question I have is, have we ever worked with them on anything before, or have we talked with other people who have?
Not Brunswick County, no. This is an entity that has not done work with Brunswick County. They have done work locally in Brunswick County with a couple churches, and they've done work over in New Hanover County, but nothing with Brunswick County.
And from what we've gathered, have we talked with other people they've worked with locally, do they seem satisfied? Or do we, do we do any, I guess, reference checks? And I ask that because I know we've had a challenging experiences with other contractors on other projects lately.
Yes, we can absolutely do reference checks on those groups.
And would you be willing to say who the, you said you interviewed three, who were the other two?
Yes, the other two were Haskell. Haskell is a design build entity located primarily in Florida, and the other is Thomas Construction. And Thomas was partnered with L S three P, who did the master plan for the county complex. So we had very strong, very, very strong candidates across all ten. We selected and again, shortlisted three, and amongst those three, we really felt strongly that that all three of them were very well qualified to to complete the project. However, Edifice was chosen based on their methodology and their process, the not only the timeline, but how they outlined how they would go about the project, and not to get into the weeds too much here, but a lot of the construction responses use tilt wall as a methodology for the building construction and sort of only focused on tilt wall. And Edifice brought to the table tilt wall as an opportunity, but also pour-in-place slab as well as steel construction. So they really didn't limit themselves to the vision for the project. They wanted Brunswick County and Brunswick County staff to direct what we wanted to see from that building. And so again, from start to finish, we felt like they were more detailed in their process and their overall understanding of the project goals that we had.
Yes, the only thing I would ask is before we have a contract, if you could have somebody check the people they worked with before and see what that experience was like. Obviously, it's one thing for what they say on paper, it's another thing for how they work.
And so we'll we'll get a recent, we'll get recent reference checks for them.
Refer to the local guy, other local guy.
It would be nice to have a contract that actually gets done on time for a change.
And speaking of timeline for this, they are expecting, if we move forward with the contract execution in the coming weeks, that they expect the the building to be complete by the end of two thousand twenty six. So we're looking at, you know, sometime winter, December of two thousand twenty six is the hopeful opening time for that project.
Big bill.
Can you, can you elucidate the aspect of being part of it? Because that's something I have been trying to fight forever to try to get, you know, facilities such as nine one one center in to a later, greater or lesser degree in some regards, but the point being is they've gotta have, like we do the U S C, they've gotta have a place they can go into, we gotta cap three or better, and they don't have to worry about whether the roof's gonna go off or something's gonna blow out. Have you really gotten down into the weeds on that?
Yeah, the entire building will be built as a category four building per code because it will house the E O C emergency management. So yes, it will be a hardened structure that will be able to withstand significant storms.
And we're also looking at the recent flooding we've had, have anticipated that as well.
Yes, so part of this project will include site improvements around the the building itself. So parking lot, driveway, and stormwater infrastructure will be a part of this project.
Okay, thanks. Change. For my own edification, it's literally gonna face this, so we're gonna lose half of this parking lot, true? I mean, it's a hundred thousand square foot building.
That is true. It is. It is going to be in between this building and Old Ocean. It is expected to, the the entry to the building is expected to face the administration building here. So we are gonna lose roughly half of the parking lot. The long-term plan to address that parking need is, once the building is complete, to, and this is a future project, but I'll go ahead and put it on the radar because it's a very good point. We will need to be considering the demolition of Building A and the construction of a parking lot where Building A sits today. And so with taking up half of the parking lot here, you take down Building A, you construct a parking lot there to replace that parking that is lost.
Okay, follow. Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, just wanted to introduce that. Again, I won't be here for the the contract to be brought before you, but just wanted to make sure there weren't any questions or comments. So absolutely, I can join in online now, too.
There you go.
Thank you for your service the past few years.
Thank you.
In your new role.
We wish you the best.
Thank you, guys. But I don't even get to go anywhere now. I get the next one as well.
We've got the news.
No, yeah, we got.
Oh, you got, you added one on me, didn't you? That's right. All right, see you guys shortly.
Yep, I'm ready.
Next item is one we added tonight, and by way of background, Mr. Thompson and I were on a call with National Association of Counties, and this came up that they were concerned about what this resolution will address. And we found out about this Thursday, and I want to thank our staff for cranking out this resolution very quickly. We reached out to the national counties to see if they had a template. They did not, so this may become the template for other agencies. But this is a resolution in support of congressional funding for the Disaster Relief Fund, continuance of halted recovery project, and sufficient provisions to prevent future immediate needs funding. And I'll explain what that means in here because that headline's confused me at first. But whereas on August the seventh, two thousand twenty four, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, also known as FEMA, announced that the Disaster Relief Fund, which is the D R F, had become depleted, forcing the agency to transition to immediate needs funding, I N F, and halting more than six point one billion dollars in recovery activities across the country. And whereas, the D R F is a critical source of funding for disaster response and recovery efforts, and recent funding gaps have placed undue strain on state and local governments hindering long-term recovery programs. And whereas, in two thousand twenty three, over eight hundred and forty counties experienced at least one major disaster with twenty eight separate billion dollar disasters totaling over ninety two billion dollars in damages. And whereas, when FEMA operates under I N F for immediate needs funding, long-term recovery efforts are delayed as disaster funding is severely restricted across the country. And whereas, this unpredictability places undue burden on disaster survivors and local governments and complicates already onerous programs with many counties relying on loans to cover recovery costs. And whereas, rising interest rates can further increase financial strain, potentially affecting county credit ratings, particularly in smaller or rural areas. potentially affecting county credit ratings, particularly in smaller or rural areas. And whereas, Congress can prevent disruptions in recovery and ensure communities receive timely support after disasters by fully funding the Disaster Relief Fund, helping counties avoid significant challenges in addressing both immediate and long term recovery needs. And whereas, Congress is urged to address the current shortfall by replenishing the Disaster Relief Fund through the continuing resolution currently under negotiations. And whereas, Congress is requested to include an additional ten billion in disaster relief to support ongoing recovery efforts and prevent future funding gaps. And whereas, Brunswick County requests that Congress backfill the six point one billion in projects halted due to the transition to immediate needs funding and ensure these funds are available. And whereas, Brunswick County asks Congress to include provisions to avoid the need for immediate needs funding next year, ensuring more stable and predictable funding for disaster recovery, disaster recovery. Now therefore be resolved that the Brunswick County Board of Commissioners unequivocally expresses its support and endorsement for Congress to fully fund the Disaster Relief Fund and backfill all projects halted due to the transition to immediate needs funding, including provisions to avoid the need for immediate need funding in the coming years. Now that this, the twenty third day of September twenty twenty four cannot move approved.
It's motion for approval. And a second, all in take right? Very good.
If we could send copies of this to Congress and browser and our two U S senators and any other state agencies, maybe reach out to Chairman Lam and see if he's got ideas on committee people on specific House and Senate committees that should get there. But this is something that Chairman Thompson, you know, you know more about this than most people. Do you want to talk about the impact of this not happening?
Yeah, they, I think one of the biggest issues that that comes up with this particular resolution. Normally, whenever you, normally whenever you have a named storm, you immediately get emergency declaration at the state level and at the federal level. The president signs off on that. With this storm that we just had, we we received neither. We did not receive an emergency declaration as of yet, nor have we received a major declaration. Then what, what he was talking about, about life safety and them switching over. What happened was FEMA switched over and stopped paying for any projects that were, where damages were were identified as. They paid for the public safety part of it, which what they call category B. Well, all these other things that our community is going to be going through, category A through G, whenever you start talking about debris, agriculture, utilities, you own and own the electrical power grid. Own and own, those are the things that they put on hold because they did not have the funding to do that. And that's why we need to make sure that that funding exists because federal government historically pays seventy five percent under the Stafford Act. The state, North Carolina is one of the only states in the, in the country that pays the additional twenty five percent match. Outside of that, whenever you go to other states, they share that cost system, cost sharing. So we really have a good system set up in North Carolina if we make sure that FEMA has the money. I think that that's exactly what this document is requesting is for, for our federal delegation to make sure that they have approval of funding for all these special projects. All right, so that's, that ends presentations and we'll move into administration. And I believe you are correct, you're going to be speaking to us again.
Yes, sir. On behalf of the Code Administration Department, seeking a budget amendment tonight in response to P T C number eight and the impacts that a storm and the closure of the county had on code administration, building inspection and fire inspection services that we provide across the county. So on behalf of White and Slate, his department, I'll be asking for this budget amendment tonight. So leading up to P T C number eight, our code administration department was averaging about a five or six lead time, daily time on building inspection requests. That is, it's not at a level of service that we would like to maintain. Unfortunately, it's been that way for at least a couple of months now. Just due to the sheer number of building inspection requests that we've had. We actually seeked out over six hundred inspection requests per day at a period of time of about three weeks ago. So significant need there for us to get out into the community and complete these inspections in a timely manner. But then we had P T C number eight come along and county offices were closed for several days. So leading into that, we had about, again, a five or six day lead time on inspection requests. We had to cancel over twelve hundred inspections as a result of P T C number eight. And so now that we're back open and back up and running, not only do we have the normal daily demand, but we've got to catch up with those twelve hundred plus that we, that we canceled out due to the storm. So we're requesting today funding to go about three different potential solutions to help us overcome the backlog that we have on those building inspections. The first is that the county has asked the state to provide building inspection resources to us. We've actually requested ten building inspectors for a total of twenty days. With that request, the county is responsible for the compensation, meals, lodging, gas, et cetera, for those assets if we are to get them. There's no guarantee and there's no indication whether we will get that full request, if we'll get a partial request or if we will get any. But it is necessary for us to have the funding in place to make that request to the state. So that is one of the solutions that we have. So then fifty thousand dollars, that money cannot be spent unless those resources from the state are obtained. So it could be that those funds are not either fully spent or spent at all. The second solution is to utilize a pool of temporary part time funding for the county to go out and hire part time staff. Those part time staff members would not be employed with the county longer than six months or till, until service levels have reached an appropriate level. But there are folks in the community who have expressed interest in part time work with code administration, those that may have been career building inspectors who have retired to the area and would just like to dabble in it a little bit. So there's an opportunity for us to utilize that, that group of individuals in the county. And so we need a pool of funds to, to pay and compensate those individuals. So that is another one that we're asking for twenty thousand dollars for that particular part time temporary pool. And then third and finally, requesting overtime for our existing personnel that we have. So offering overtime to those individuals to work beyond a forty hour work week. I will say that this past Saturday, we had a number of building inspectors volunteer to come in on Saturday. We completed over two hundred inspections on Saturday. Again, that's an overtime opportunity for those individuals and trying to get caught back up. So three different potential solutions, all trying with the same potential outcome of catching us back up as a result of this. So any questions on the budget process?
Can we do a combination? Is this all three? We will be making?
At least potentially try to do all.
My, I'm in order, so I'll make a motion for approval. My only concern, we have people we really don't know coming from wherever within the state do our inspections. But we issue the okay or the CO or what have you. So we're assuming responsibility for people we don't even know.
Yeah, we would utilize our lead inspectors to help kind of oversee those individuals. But you're right, there's going to be an element of training and infield adjustment that we're going to have to make. There are also a lot of very simple inspections that we can do on a regular basis that we would.
Yeah, foundations stuff like that. Well, I made the motion to approve.
I'll say.
Okay. Make sure to second any further discussion. Hearing that, all in take right?
Aye.
Very good. All right, administration, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And you'll have to bear with me tonight, because you have an old county manager with bad eyes and sense of displace.
Steve, can, can you wait a minute? I was going to say no to that. You didn't ask if there was anybody that opposed, but that's okay. My, my vote is no on that, please.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No. Very good. Okay, Madam Clark, we're getting on that. Okay, all right, so, sorry, go ahead.
Well, this evening we had a good bit of input that wasn't really good news. We have some beer, I have our beer in Grand Fork here from the fiscal year that ended June thirty. And it is almost exclusively good news. And I apologize again for the monitors being out. They were walking earlier today. But we think some cabling that got wet is continuing to degrade. And that's also why we got the unusual tint on the, on one display that, that is working. And yes, I've already asked out to you to make sure that the new system will be more water resistant than, than what we have. Here's just some statistical data on the county's population growth, which, you know, everyone in the room is already aware of phenomenal population growth for several decades now.
Steve, let me ask you now, if you can go back to that. I think we were looking at nine three hundred, it was what the growth was or whatever. It looks like it's not quite as steep as it was earlier, or am I wrong in that?
These, these numbers are from the state data center and they do not necessarily coincide with what the U S Bureau of the Citizens publishes. So there, I think the general trajectory of mine honestly is, is about at the same level. There are certainly many thousands of Brunswick residents each year. This shows the change in current membership in Brunswick County schools. As you can see, fortunately for our expenditures, at least, that growth is up nearly as high an annual as the county's population growth. However, the data that the Board of Education is sharing with me certainly indicates in the next few years that that curve is going to be turning up and that growth in, in school membership is going to be increasing at, at a faster rate. Here's a chart of the growth in our county staff. As you see, that, that curve really is not as high as the population growth. And that is because there is some scale economy and growth or productivity. This chart shows our full time equivalent spot job function is she public safety sort of, sort of leads to looking at their growth. Of course, there's our situations where there is a real, a stronger correlation between population growth and the need for those services. Number of water and wastewater consumers, again, you see a similar growth there related to the county's population growth. Our average daily capacity in gallons is, is charted here. The size of our operating fund is charted here and that's roughly parallel to the growth in the population across the boroughs. This is a, what I call sort of an accounting technical chart. It's important for our debt financing that we need certain ratios as far as revenue to our debt service and we are meeting and or exceeding those coverage ratios. The size of our general fund, again, that's, we've, we've had, had growth. But we have been able to control our expenses to a reasonable degree and that's why we've been having the current tax rates. Our debt service in the general fund has gone down some as some of our previous debt, private district debt has been paid off. I think we're likely to have some additional school debt, not too distant in the future. It shows the growth that our tax, our needs, the property tax we're using for the last five years. People, healthy growth there even with adjusted tax rate. This is our electricity rate, which is absolutely phenomenal. So that's massively upward change from, from the first year of the period. We're reviewing and of course, motor vehicles from the time of the state keep that against registrations comes for all right processes on the proceeding. Our assessed value history, we're all aware of the fifty plus percent growth twenty three revaluation. Our local sales taxes and other intergovernmental revenues, the intergovernmental revenues are flat just like, part of the, in the first year, part of that was some disaster money that had come in and in the economic disaster money, I guess I'll call it, also. You see our local option sales taxes continue to have very significant growth, more significant growth than, than the study. Permitancy fee, sales and services, again, healthy growth, which pretty much parallels the, the overall growth in the county. Unbalance has remained strong despite the fact that we have a, a major unplanned expenditure of property last year. We still have a very, very strong unbalance available for appropriation that exceeds your, your target twenty seven, thirty two percent. This is a chart of the same, plus the, the transfers. In the, the current amount will exceed your, your policy guidelines. We do have other concerns going forward, you know, the, the art of funding and the compliance reporting. The overall government funding priorities. We need to make sure that, that they are compliant with those rules. Continue to take good funding for capital improvement on planning projects and implementing the recommendations identified in the space of facility need studies. Certainly we're going to be some economic burdens on county going forward. And growth and its effects on our services and infrastructure certainly are going to, we're going to continue to need to enhance things both in the general fund and in their utility bonds. There's probably going to be additional investment in other economic development projects on, on the horizon. Certainly, we want to make sure that we retain these great county employees that, that you have, that really step up to the plate every day as well as in special times like this week. And of course, none of us really know what Congress and the General Assembly might do that would impact either our revenues or our expenses for both of them. So we do, we need to be prudent with, with our reserves. That's the end of the presentation. We also had a, a budget amendment to appropriate a little over nineteen million dollars to capital reserves for two major projects for the, an additional twelve million or so for the health and human services building, you know, we told you we thought we would have to borrow up for that. And we think that we will be able probably to make that take over without borrowing. And also funding for the animal services. Probably to make that take over without borrowing and also funding for the animal services building. Uh, at, and then some other major capital projects, uh, they're listed in your packet, but among the things like. Uh, the uh remainder with the of the funding uh for the. Community control system and that that B C C uh. When we prepared this agenda and this budget amendment, that was about two weeks before last Monday. Uh, so if if the board wants to just. Hold on this for tonight, we certainly, you could just table it or you could transfer. Uh. The identified amount of funding to a capital reserve, but not a targeted one, just just move it. Out of the general into capital reserve and then at a later date, you could move the bonds as you wish to individual projects.
Is everyone okay with that? And if everyone is okay with that, you need a motion to that effect.
Yes, sir.
I'll I'll move to move the funds. Uh, to a capital, to a capital, yeah, undesignated capital approval.
I'll say.
All right, any further discussion on that?
There is no allocation as far as any specific amount of money going to animal control or anything else at this time, it's just a a pool of money that can be used. Or improvement in whatever map in future data.
That is correct.
And that will be voted on at a later date as well.
That is correct, yeah. Harry Dunn, all in favor, right? Any of them? Very good. All right. So we'll move to the next item and it's the uh. Goals voting delegate at the N C A C C and do we have a recommendation for that?
Who's interesting? Morning.
Morning.
Don't you take it, morning.
Yo.
I just can't get those tire marks off my back.
Bye. I know he's gonna be there.
Uh, yeah, I have to be there.
So, so is that good? So, uh, Commissioner Cook and and then ultimately the Commissioner Forte. Everybody in here?
Yeah, I'm fine.
All in favor?
I like the motion taken.
Yeah, we got it, we better get a motion. So, you made a motion?
Yeah.
For that and I'll say it, so all in favor, right?
I agree. Kind of get volunteered for this.
Yeah. A miserable. For item number four, I need to, I need to be with kids.
I'll make the motion to recuse Chairman Thompson on item four and then Commissioner Forte for that over.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
And before we get into that, I'd ask the manager, just for the benefit of people here, to explain why we did what we just did. As far as the recusing and how we got to that.
Yes.
The 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 recommended, the number one recommended firm, S D R, uh. Mr. Thompson works for them and and so he has been outside of the. The process for this procurement and they invite for the vendor that's already in place also. But he's not not involved, that's where he recused himself. Also, where Stephanie explains the the mechanics of this to you, I need to tell you. That again, we prepared this agenda two weeks ago and we had a little thousand year event a week ago today. And we really needed to get these firms engaged, the damage assessments could uh. Proceed, so I confirmed with the county legal and I actually executed the contract. Last week and so the assessments could start, so what we're really asking for tonight. Uh, is your ratification of my style be approved.
And Vice Chairman, if I may say, in previous years, we've had engineers have served on this board. And it would be unbeknownst to them or whatever, that was a similar case, whereas the firm they worked for was actually approved for. Or chosen and they had to recuse themselves because they had a direct direct relationship as we do with chairman, so that being said, this is not. An unusual matter.
I had to recuse myself when we passed the Brunswick guarantee because I was president of the foundation at the time, as I am again. But, yeah, we've all, we've all been in situations, yeah, we've all been in that situation. Stephanie, if you would.
Thank you, good evening. Um, we are here to request that the Board of Commissioners ratify the award of the primary disaster debris management contract to the Southern Disaster Recovery LLC. And award the, and I'm sorry, I said award, I meant ratify, also award the second disaster debris management contract to C T C. Disaster Response Incorporated.
I'll move approval.
Okay.
I'll second.
And we have a motion in a second, are there any questions for Stephanie?
Stephanie, I appreciate everything you've done during the storm.
Yes, ma'am.
Especially at the landfill, uh, you had a tough situation there, so uh. Appreciate, and and make sure you let G F L know that they've done an outstanding job in getting the trash picked up.
Will do, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions or comments? Not, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor, say aye. Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Mister Chairman, I turn it back over to you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, the next is board appointments and it looks like the. Uh, appointment to the community advisory board.
Vice Chairman, I'd like to move that we take that with the next meeting.
Okay.
Second, ma'am.
All right, all in favor, right?
No.
Just for personal.
Um, the next one is the planning board district, who are you appointing?
And I make a motion that I uh want to appoint Jim Board to the planning board.
I'll say it.
What, what's his last name?
Jim Board.
Oh, yeah, I got you, it didn't sound, I don't know what I heard you, but it did sound like that.
She spoke it, so.
I guess.
All right, so all in favor, right? All right, so that ends board appointments and we come to the moment for other business.
I have two just quick comments, one, if I could, Mister Chairman, all the FEMA resolutions, we could also make it there, like we could send that to all the other clerks in the state. And encourage them to have their laws passed, the same resolutions sent into their federal representatives and then also send it to the N C A C C and make up. And then, secondly, I know we've had conversations about requesting a declaration, if we send anything. Official from Brunswick County requesting a declaration, and if not, can we authorize a letter to be written from the chair?
Uh, I know that David is here and I know that the folks with uh with emergency management will be in the house. I'm assuming they came in the house today, but um, so they're they're compiling the information for the declaration. Do you want to address that, Dave?
Want to make sure that if we need to do anything as a board, we do it over here.
Yeah.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, yes, today's been a very busy day moving towards that goal of. Of pulling off potential declarations, both at the state and the federal level. Um, North Carolina Emergency Management Individual Assistant, uh, assistance teams. Were in, are in town today and tomorrow, um, doing assessments, uh, building, building the case. Getting all the supporting documentation and estimates to to move forward. Uh, with that that process in the, our attempt to get a state declaration and then eventually, hopefully. If the amounts warrant, uh, pull off a federal declaration. Um, tomorrow morning at ten o'clock, we are having a I A Individual Assistance and Public Assistance. Uh, kickoff meeting with both the uh North Carolina and representation from FEMA. Uh, to to further that discussion and that effort. Um, we have, between the Red Cross damage assessments that have already been completed. Over the last, uh, probably over the weekend into late last week. Um, and the assessments that were done today, they've um, they've hit a very large portion of the affected areas. Of those homes that were either um, are either no visible damage all the way through destroyed. And um, we're well on our way of getting to the point of um. The the meeting the criteria for a state declaration, so um, you know, we'll know more in the in the coming weeks once they compile or. Next week or so, I believe, um, once they compile all that data, they take it back and run the process on their end. Over in Raleigh as they uh work through the, you know, declarations, so. At minimum, we're hoping for a state declaration, at best, we'll have a FEMA declaration.
Would it be helpful or irrelevant to have a letter from the chair, because that even play into the process is something, one more piece of support?
I I would, uh, my recommendation would be, or I would definitely support that type of documentation to support our need. Um, but I also would recommend that we kind of see what we're getting back from the assessment teams. To drive, maybe assist you in that message.
Very good.
I would make a motion that we authorize the staff to work with the chair to write that letter at the time that you guys think appropriate, so that way we can do it. It's on the record here, we can do it before the next meeting, so.
In the form of a motion, so that's.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor, right? Any of them? Thanks, sir.
Chairman, I would like to say again, I can't say enough about the efforts of the individual staff members as well as collectively that we've seen. As well as operating with nonprofits and the state entities, everything across the board, I tell you, they've done exemplary work, they've worked above and beyond. They've gone the extra mile, I can't say enough about them. So, my hat's off to all of them.
Very good, any other? All right, I I do have one and uh, Mister Manager, if you got a pen. You might, you might need it. Uh, this past week, uh, I have given quite a bit of thought to. Several areas of of our county's needs and uh felt like that uh. That I needed to move forward with with some uh discussion and intervention. To ensure that the county continues on positive. Uh, currently, we have somewhere around seventeen wastewater projects pending. We have two that have just been completed recently, the project totals over a hundred thirty-two million for thirteen hundred dozens. Four projects uh pending look as, well, still awaiting approval of well over two hundred million dollars. There's two projects that are waiting for state permits, uh, unless they have been acquired in the last uh. Uh, few days, we have a water system project that continues to be on a slow ongoing process. With construction, we have a U D O uh under review, going through and being updated. Uh, we have, we have several thousand home sites that have been approved and awaiting construction. Uh, which will have an impact on our, on our current system as well as the uh. Uh, future system as it continues to be built out. Uh, our awareness of emergency conditions and flooding uh became apparent this past week. I would recommend that a flood study be conducted, I would recommend that we we consult with Doctor, Dr. Dahl at N C State. Who has done many of these studies for North Carolina uh to address our current and future impacts. I would also recommend that we update our evacuation plan for the entire county. Uh, our fire service, uh, our fire service needs some help. Now, earlier this year, there was a structural fire in one of our districts. Due to the lack of manpower by this department, they implemented a defensive posture. Because of not having a two in and two out, which is a uh requirement for. For firefighting, public safety personnel. It cut their ability to activate and go in and do a rescue. Unfortunately, we happened to be a victim upstairs on the phone with our nine-one-one center at the time. And the current staffing situation allowed for six departments to be dispatched to this one house fire. It took longer than fifteen minutes from the time of the arrival of the unit on the scene to rescue this trapped resident. Which is unacceptable and we must act now. So my recommendation until these items can be properly covered this evening, uh, and that I've covered this evening. Uh, can be addressed for public safety and infrastructure needs, I would recommend that staff review all public safety. And infrastructure items and return to us with a recommendation of a nine or twelve or eighteen month. Moratorium on any new approved developments in Brunswick County. I would request staff return to the Board of Commissioners at our October twenty-first meeting with a recommendation in hand. That, and I would also make the recommendation that we immediately. Stop all requests that are not in the queue currently. That the board, uh, for the board, for board action, and I'm saying planning board action, be halted except for commercial. Request, all currently approved uh developments can move forward with the permitting process. But no new developments would enter the queue that are not already in the queue for planning board review. Until we can address these infrastructure and these public safety needs that our community has. Uh, I would, I would move forward with uh with just giving uh staff direction if I get support from the board. If not, I'll be glad to put it into a motion.
Well, I'll give you a second.
Okay, uh, but I would, I would love to just give staff direction to come back to us on the twenty-first. With something in hand that addresses these these issues that have been identified. And determine if we need to put a moratorium in place. So I'm, I'm open for any feedback or discussion.
Mister Chairman, I, I recognize that that may be a really good approach, uh. And I'm not discounting it, but as I understand it, state law provides little, no ability for local governments to issue temporary moratorium. On developments, projects within their jurisdiction. And local governments are barred from adopting a moratorium for the purpose of developing and adopting new rented plants in support of development relations with government buildings. Residential development products, this aspect of state law is important to keep in mind when the county receives questions or suggestions for moratorium. Of residential development due to reasons like mending, U D O, or writing updating plans. That being said, I think that what we need to do in light of that, I recognize this is an unusual event with respect to the fire department, I recognize it's also one of the fire department. And I think it's totally on the south of the field, I have that kind of life, I do know that during a fire that we had, series of fires. Those not each firefighters weighed up to the waist to get the fires put out, but I, and I also know that in respect of the flooding. We are, I'm talking engineering about every instance that we have to try to take these things, I think we need to get direction. From not only the county administration, but legal as well as to how it processes, because. As we know, we've been basically barred from doing moratoriums unless it's a urgent and temporary matter. So I don't know, I think we need to get feedback from the administration and from uh legal as to how we should receive.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
That's what he said, yeah.
Exactly.
Um, just, just to follow up with that, there is a a way to allow us to have the moratorium. So I want legal to make sure that we get all these things that Randy, uh, Commissioner Thompson has addressed. Uh, in that part, um, I did contact the school of government and I did get the uh. Information from them how to go about it, I I'm sure you'll be able to get that, um, just to let the public know. Um, back in twenty-two, uh, I requested a lot of this stuff and nothing was done, so uh. I'm very supportive of it, even though a lot of these people that commented tonight didn't know. So, um, I hope that staff moves forward, we need to protect the county and make it a healthy county. I'm not against development or anybody coming in here, but we need to make sure we have the plan in place.
Say any other thoughts?
I'm not opposed to it, I I, let me choose my words here. I would ask that our managers and our attorney. Look at this closely, I do not want to break any law and have repercussions. Of the higher ups, right, I'd be fine with a moratorium. Be, do we have any idea when the consultant will come back with the U D O?
They're in the process of, uh, they're about three months into that process, so they're reviewing our current U D O that we have as a framework to build off of. And they'll begin their stakeholder meetings and. And they'll begin their stakeholder meetings and public meetings.
Yeah, I have my next, this coming.
They've reached out to the five of you to engage the five of you and what your vision is for it. Uh, but the outcome is still expected to be sometime later this year for a final draft.
That's kind of what I was looking for. So this will be done within six months, seven months? We should have?
We're probably in that nine-month range, uh, before we have a, a final draft.
Yeah, we just can't wait nine months. We, we need to move forward. That was why the, picking the twenty-first, that gives almost a month to staff. To review this and to, and I'll provide you with a copy of my, my notes. Uh, the, the items on here are, are very important to, to all of us. I think the, the issue with the fire service is one that we're gonna have to think about and figure out how to move forward with. Obviously, we probably can't do that until we get into the budget session for next year. And so if we have to have a moratorium that stretches that long, I'm fine with that. Uh, if, uh, the flooding, uh, understanding the impact. Uh, and I, I haven't said a word about development up until this point, but understanding the impact. Of the flow that's coming into, uh, to Brunswick County. Uh, understanding the, the issues that many of the people just shared this evening. Uh, a flood study needs to be conducted of this county. Uh, and, and we need to get our state representatives on board because seventeen and our arteries do not need. The flood with every rainfall we get.
Mr. Chairman, I, I know that people think this is nuts. It's not. I've been, I spent two days doing this about fifteen years ago. And at the time, the ministers that were sitting in office refused to look at it. But the reality was, we had a Bieber mediation perspective. And I've had constituents who've had flooded out areas and it wasn't even storm. And we went back and we found a series of Bieber dams that caused those blockages. We need to make sure that all of our drainage areas are working. Everyone, we've got to see if there's any issue anywhere. Beavers, because as you know, you can drive down the highway and you see where there's no leaves in the trees, you know that's where the Bieber dam.
I would be glad to add Bieber dams to, to my list.
Uh, but then you can make a motion about the project sits in the hub that's separate.
I'm just processing that because you covered a lot there. I'm absolutely fine with the flood study. That's something I think we need to do. Um, and I don't know anything about the individual that you specified from N C State, but I would say, let's certainly look at him. But let's see if there might be one or two others and make sure we get the right person to do it for Brunswick County. Um, I would ask our staff to give us an unbiased. P, feedback and don't feel like that you're being told to develop information that supports a specific conclusion. I want to hear what your feedback truly is and it be independent and autonomous, not be told, give us information to lead us to this specific point, if that makes sense.
I do, I just think we need to move forward in a, in a direction of investigating the possibility. And addressing these major issues that, that we have, the short, shortcut.
And, and I, and data is what I'm looking for and I'm gonna make sure that it's truly unbiased data. You know, you can find data to support almost any conclusion out there. I mean, that's, I've seen that happening on any work. In every, every arena. So, you know, that's what I'm looking for.
Randy, your proposal was what, twelve to eighteen month moratorium?
Anywhere from nine, nine, twelve or eighteen month moratorium. Whatever it takes to address these issues and get us information back. That, uh, that leads us to being able to support our current residents and any future residents that are added on. Uh, right now, today, I don't know that we have the information in this, but in these particular areas. That addresses public safety in Brunswick County. To the level that it needs to be, the expectation of our citizens. Uh, I, I know that I've spoken about this fire issue before, um, and it keeps coming back. But now with the, with the evacuation needs, you know, we, I, I don't know. Many of you, some of you, some of this board was on, on the calls with our impacted communities. Uh, the mayors and, uh, uh, some of the council members and some of the impacted communities, uh, this last week and this week. Uh, to learn that they had been working independently on coming up with their own evacuation needs. Uh, that included utili- utilization of state roadways coming into the county. That our emergency management department was not aware of was mind boggling to me. I, I just, I, I couldn't believe that they, they needed to independently go out on their own and look at that.
Well, we also identified in those calls as well. I've been involved in something one of the sun, and the truth was. We said, and I stated this, that a lot of times municipalities will not pull the trigger to get people out when they need to. And when we tell them that they need to leave, I've been in a lot of these conference calls over the years and they don't do it. And it may not be those current people that are on those counties or other those municipal administrations at this time. But I do know in prior histories, we would say, when are you gonna leave? And it was total silence on the other end. And then everybody decides when they really think it's gonna get bad, even though we already told them the day before, two days before. They all decided they don't want to at the same time. And they say that the evacuation rigs don't work. Evaluations do work. In fact, you were the author of some of them. The point being is we know that they work. But the problem is, we might, must make sure that municipalities do evacuate when we ask them to.
Oh, gr- granted that we, we work with challenging situations and challenging people and authorities sometimes. I, I give you that. But we should be working together to identify if we have. Proper evacuation routes and timelines for our entire county. That's all I'm asking for to come out of this. It's just, tell us if we need to improve. If we need to slow down, if we need to stop something, uh, whether it's with the flooding, whether it's with the evacuation routes. We can't stop our fire service. We're gonna have to address this somehow and pretty immediately. You know, do we need to, uh, our wastewater and our water treatment system? We, we need to, uh, we need to pump it up. Sorry for the pun, but we need, we need to get it to where it needs to be.
I don't think, I, I, maybe wrong, if you live in the ball, bring lights out, that they could ask to get to that house. Is that the case? Couldn't get to it?
Nah, three, three departments. Nobody could get to that house. The roads were washed out all around it. They tried from every angle. There was no way to that house.
And, and.
They tried going through the woods. They couldn't do it.
It, it's the situations where they can get there and because they don't have proper manpower, they can't. Do life-saving needs in a timely fashion.
And the other prob- uh, the other problem that we have is water pressure. If we don't have the water pressure to put out a fire, house fire, then that's not good either. And we know Saint James has been, we've been working on Saint James, trying to get their water pressure moved forward. Uh, not sure where it's at right now, John, uh, but, uh, we need to make sure the water pressure's in place. And some of these things need to be slowed down. We need to recruit and we need to hold these projects that are in the hub. Long enough for staff to come back and say, hey, what is your recommendation?
So, so that, that's my motion to, to, to do that.
You got a say here.
So.
I mean, it's, it's, I'm okay with it as long as we're asking staff to give us feedback and not drive us to a specific conclusion.
But hold things that if it's not in the queue right now, hold it until staff comes back to us. I don't want to see a deluge of new developments hitting planning's door tomorrow morning.
More forum right now.
That's not.
In the queue, you mean?
Have already filed their plan with.
Planning.
Okay, once the application comes in, you can't stop even with.
That's it. But before the application comes in. Uh, until we come back together on the twenty-first and decide how we're moving forward.
Everybody. I think there's confusion.
Yeah, I'm confused.
I think there's confusion right there.
I think county attorney had it, right?
Yeah.
Well, it sounds like, I mean, you're stopping everything.
No, we're not.
It sounds like it, though.
No, we're not.
Just stopping residential.
We're still in inspect.
Residential. Yeah, just residential, not commercial. Don't want to mess with any commercial. Let commercial come out.
Prior to the second meeting in October.
I'm sorry?
Prior to the second meeting in October, or do you want to start doing that?
No, I, I had rather see today that we not, because tomorrow morning or by, by, by the twenty-first. You're, you're gonna have thousands of, uh, development projects thrown in there because they know that we're looking at it. Uh, uh, can we, can we, can we say, hey, if it's not in the queue? If you, if you don't have your plan to planning as of this day. Then you're gonna have to hold until we open back up.
Uh, no, certainly you can. I don't, I don't think.
Under why, why can't I?
Uh, I believe it's legislation. I'll look at it in more detail, but, uh, unless there's a case of imminent or substantial threat. Immediately, you will even have to have a public hearing before you take any actions.
I thought the public hearing was for a short term.
But I'll look into it, come back after the session.
Okay, yeah, that'd be good. Yeah, if you want to bring it back up after the session, we, we want it to happen. Okay. Yeah, we gotta. Uh, so, so do we want to bring it back up for, for vote after post-session?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and we can do this. Everybody okay with that? Okay, uh, all right. So, so what do we do about the motion on the floor? It just stays open until we come back in post-session?
You could just withdraw it, then we'll go into post-session and remake the motion. You just can't leave it open.
Okay, can't leave it open.
Right.
We, we can make a change when we come out.
Well, I tell you what, why don't we do it with, with the exception of the one item about stopping. Uh, receiving any, um, applications.
You can read exactly what we're voting on.
Yeah, yeah. Well, what I'm asking for then in the recommendation is to, uh, for them to come back with all the items that I listed. Uh, come back to us on October twenty-first with a recommendation in hand. Discussing the need, if it needs to be a nine, twelve or eighteen month moratorium. On any new development within Brunswick County, with the exception of commercial property. Uh, so we're talking residential, uh, development. That does not impact any approved, uh, developments currently. They can continue forward with the permitting process. Uh, we're not, not looking at that at all. We're looking at what the future is until these public safety needs, uh, and infrastructure needs can be addressed.
I, I don't have a problem with them coming back to tell us. I just don't think we can change the mechanism right now until we get that back. Then by that time, we know what the process is to be able to stop it. So that being said, I mean, I'm just looking at it from the laws that I've, I've seen. I don't think we have that ability, but I'm an attorney. So I think if you say, I want an evaluation, I think that's fine. I think this point is very much behind that. But I think beyond that, though, we have to find out, okay, what resources will we receive if we do it? And the second thing is, what process can we do to be able to do whatever is the outcome of that evaluation is? And that would be on the twenty-first. That's where I am.
I'm game for voting, for asking you to do an evaluation, but again, not driving into specific outcomes. It's like we're giving the A, B, and C as the potential outcomes right now. I just want to do the evaluation.
Sure.
I, I understand the, the charge and I, I know you've changed it, but I, I'm, uh. From what the county attorney has said, should you direct us to not accept applications? Between tomorrow and October twenty-first, I think that is a moratorium in that that is not compliant.
Okay.
Statutes.
If y'all come back with that and make that determination, then that's fine. But we, we need the investigation into whether or not we need to do a moratorium to address these issues.
And, and I understand that charge.
Everybody okay with that?
Mm-hmm. Now, when are they coming back with that?
On October twenty-first.
And we can't come back soon because we're right here at it.
Can you get it sooner?
No, twenty-first.
Twenty-first, I think, is appropriate. I mean, that's almost a month to come back.
Okay, I'm, I'm game. I have, I have issues with the wording of, of the motion. I'm game with asking to report to bring us data. But I have issues with the wording of the motion, for that.
Okay, so, so if, if, if we say that we need to, uh. Uh, by all the items that were covered, dealing with public safety and infrastructure. We, we are recommending that staff review public safety and infrastructure and return to us. Where a recommendation concerning moratorium, um, for new development in Brunswick County. With the exception of commercials by October the twenty-first.
Can we try it this way? Take that whole print that you have. Give it to.
Yeah.
Manager and the attorney, come back to us with these suggestions. What can we legally?
Data and options, yeah, as opposed to saying, can we do X data and options?
Yeah, but I, 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 but yes, as long as it's looking at the moratorium. Until these get addressed is the issue.
More than have to be decided once they come back, but then.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Driving into a specific conclusion.
That's right, that's.
If they, if we need it, though.
Well.
If they say, hey, we can address all these issues.
Board is receptive to that, but I think you're gonna have to have the information back from administration a little first before we know an option.
Right. Okay, and that's what I'm asking for.
Well, yeah.
I mean, we're, we're putting it out there that the possibility of a moratorium exists.
But it certainly does, but it doesn't, doesn't bring.
But it's not charging them to go and come back with a moratorium if they can address these issues. I mean, it, the.
And we're still not gonna get road issues because we know that's react because the community doesn't do that.
Yeah, we, we. We're, 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 we're stuck where we drive. Yeah, I agree. Yeah, we're stuck where we drive. But, uh, so y'all okay with them doing that?
I still have hang up with the wording of it.
I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with it. Um, I think we need to move forward to see what we can do to get something done. Because we are doing changes to our U D O. And one of the requirements, if you're changing your D O, you can request, uh, until these regulations are updated. You can request to have a moratorium. And so, um, I don't know why we can't move forward. To make sure everything for the county is done properly and for the people that are living and moving here.
So my request has changed that I'm not asking for there to be any. Dead, you know, stop dead orders on any, receiving any applications. Because it sounds like the advice from, from legal is that that can occur, that is moratorium. But if the staff can investigate these items and come back with a better solution. Than what I'm thinking would be a moratorium until we have to get these things in place. If they come back with a better option, I'm all the way.
Something where we don't get sued.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I don't, I don't want that either.
Have to bring in the word moratorium, although it politically sounds great to everybody. The reality is that is a black field. We can do that because that engages the legal perspective, which we're trying to avoid. But when you get sued, it's already tested. We're not only gonna get sued, but the damages are outstanding. So the point meaning is, we have to figure out what, I don't know how many people.
Hold it down.
But the thing about it is, we've always simply, the, the administration do is to come back and give us suggestions as to how we move forward. If we say to them to simply try to figure out if we do or don't do a moratorium, I think that's really putting a cart full of horse. Reality is, we want an evaluation of where we are, what they think we can do to better mediate. That's what we're looking for. Is that not accurate?
I, I would go along with that, but I, I'm, uh, you know, I'm, I'm.
Well, you're, you're.
If we need, if, if we need a moratorium for all this to take. What I'm saying is, is that instead of continuing to add to our population. Address the issues that our current population is dealing with before we go on and add even more to it.
They're gonna have to come back to us on the twenty-first and tell us that.
Well, and that's what I'm asking for.
But we can't sit here and tell them we want to or don't want to do something.
Hey, what, hey, change that?
I mean, yeah, I mean, I'm looking for them to come back with, with a recommendation that, that I can live with and they can live with. And the rest of us can live with.
And we can certainly come back with a recommendation in that timeframe and tell you. If we believe that we have data that would support, uh, uh, moratorium. That would be compliant with the general statutes. And still, you know, it would be the power of your decision if you wanted to implement that. Uh, it's, it's a.
I mean, that's.
Pretty strict guidelines. And. If we turn this switch off to none. Literally tens of thousands of homes are gonna be built in Brunswick County in the next five years. Bar economic catastrophe, even if we did say we won't take another application. So there are, there are a lot of challenges and a lot of likelihood to accelerate, uh, some of these problems. And address concerns like the fire service is gonna take significant. Capital in operating, uh, commitments from the board above and beyond what are currently committed.
Yeah.
In that certainty.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, just a comment. I think we're in a lot of ways asking the same question. We're just asking the question in different ways.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Steve, do you have the direction you need on what feedback to bring? Even if we just give you direction as opposed to having a motion on what to tell you to do research, do you think?
We, we, I'd say I think I understand.
You got the gist.
I'll pull my motion if you feel like you've got direction and I'll provide you with my notes.
And we're, we're not getting hung up on how the motions work.
Yeah, is that okay?
Yeah, whatever.
Okay. I'm good with that.
I have another question. We just went through this meeting. For nearly three hours. With black monitors. Had they just come on?
No. Right out.
Yeah, right out.
That's some funky looking room.
And they come?
Yes. Like, you're just getting there randomly.
They just came on.
They knew we were getting up to go to closed session. Yeah. All right. Is there any other business to come forth with? All right, we have a closed session, sir.
Yes, sir. If I can get a motion entered in the closed session to approve minutes, consult with the attorney and to discuss the acquisition of property.
So move it a second.
All right, all in favor of that?
Ah.
Okay, we're going to close session.